Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Regular Meeting of December the 12th, 2023 at 7 o'clock. Meeting has been called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Here.
Councilmember Marti Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hamilton.
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Here. Thank you. For those that are able, if you would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item is Item 3, which are public comments for items not on the agenda. Before I read it, is there any other speaker cards that need to be submitted to the city clerk at this time? Okay, thank you. So let me go ahead again. Public comments for items not on the agenda. Individuals allowed up to three minutes. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and our action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. So with that, I believe, how many speaker cards do we have, please?
We have 10.
We have 10. And I know some are here to support and be in presence. And so with there being 10, we will go ahead and allow three minutes. And we will have the city clerk start to call your name. And if you could come to the podium, please, and then line up after. And then certainly there will be a timer that will be visible. And so if you can watch that, it will help keep you on track. What I would ask, as we have a practice and policy here, is that for some folks, coming up and speaking is not easy, whether they're in a large audience or a small audience. So what I ask and would like is that each speaker that comes forward have their opportunity to be heard with no interruption. When they're concluded, no applause, no this. It is so that everybody has that same opportunity to be heard and feel comfortable and be given that respect and professionalism. So with that, we'll go ahead and start the speakers.
I will now be calling the first three speakers. If you could please approach the podium as I call your name in the order of call, that would be appreciated. Batul Zarro, Neda Jamali, and Basan Zarro.
Good evening, members of the council. I'm here to urge the council to agendize an item to adopt a resolution in support of a ceasefire in Palestine. Many other Bay Area cities have already passed ceasefire resolutions, so the city should take a stand against the genocide. Thousands of Palestinians are dead, and passing a resolution is the bare minimum. We have a moral obligation to speak up. Israel has been committing war crimes with U.S. tax dollars for decades. Palestinians have been living under occupation for 75 years, over 75 years, so we're calling on local leaders to take action. Over 20,000 Palestinians have been killed over the span of two months. And for reference, in this city, there's what, about 40,000 people who live here? So imagine if over the span of two and a half months, half of the city has been wiped off the face of the planet. So please consider passing a ceasefire resolution. Ceasefire now and free Palestine. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please. No applause, please. No applause. Folks, please, no applause. Let's have every speaker get the attention and respect they deserve. Please.
Hi, my name is Neda Jamali, and I'm a Palestinian from Gaza. I grew up in San Bruno and attended San Bruno Public Schools, and I'm a current resident of San Bruno. We need to add a ceasefire resolution to the agenda to call for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza. Over 20,000 people have been killed by the Israeli government, including 7,000 children. Here in the U.S., we've seen a number of attacks against Palestinians. Three Palestinian-American students were shot by a white supremacist in Vermont for wearing a kufiya and speaking Arabic. A little boy was stabbed 26 times in his home against his racist landlord. We need to call for a ceasefire to protect the Palestinian Muslim and Arab community in San Bruno. By not doing this, you guys will continue the dehumanization of us and put a target on our back. Additionally, as a city, we need to put pressure on our federally elected officials to take action and to hold them accountable. Follow the lead of other cities like Oakland and Richmond and add a ceasefire resolution to the agenda. Free Palestine.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please. Please, no applause, please.
Hello, my name is Basan, and I'm here to urge you all to write a resolution calling for an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza. It has been over two months since the start of the brutal and unrelenting violence against the civilians of Gaza. As a Palestinian-American, I feel unheard and unseen. I am asking you to hear me now and stand with the over 2 million people that are still stuck in Gaza. Stand with humanity and advocate for a resolution now, today, and tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. The city clerk will call the next speakers.
Next three speakers are Kamila Albari, Justin Fanny, and Eleni Katut.
Anytime you're ready.
City council members, I greet you with peace. Salaam. I thank you for your time today. The Palestinians in San Bruno are a touchpoint of this city. If you ask anyone who grew up here or went through San Bruno City Schools District, they'll tell you that they had a Palestinian classmate or a dear Palestinian friend. We are often known for our hospitality, our kindness, and our warmth. After the height of COVID, as you know, many businesses closed here in San Bruno, but the ones that have remained continue to serve their customers loyally. Many of these popular businesses are owned and run by Palestinian families. Businesses like Seniors, Lotus, Mazra, Basan, just to name a few. These businesses are a testament to Palestinian hospitality and endurance. I moved to San Bruno a few years ago, and I will tell you that every time I go out, I see a fellow Palestinian. It's an incredible feeling to know that I can raise my children in a city where they have a sense of belonging, one I did not have growing up. Today, I ask the city council to first put the resolution on the agenda. I implore you to think globally by acting locally. Stand with other cities in the Bay Area like Oakland and Richmond. The constituents of the city want an immediate ceasefire. Please add the resolution to the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Hello. You're good. Okay. Hello, city council. My name is Justin Fang, and I'm here today to implore you to add a ceasefire resolution to the city agenda. Although I myself am not Palestinian, I am horrified by what I see every other day, well, every single day, on both social media and on television, knowing that our tax dollars are going to kill innocent civilians, people who have never done anything to us, and people who simply want to live in peace is absolutely unacceptable. Israel's occupation has existed for 75 years and is ongoing. It is completely unconscionable for us as American citizens, as people who live in a democracy, who say they care about human rights, who say that they're empathetic, who say that they care about people in general, to just stand by silently. And while I understand that this is a city council and not the federal government, not someone who approves a military budget, not somebody who has a direct control over what's going on internationally, as others have said here, you must think locally to act internationally. If we have to, we must work in every single facet, in every single way, to do our absolute best in every single possible means in order to ensure that the Palestinian people are not genocided and that they are not ethnically cleansed anymore and that the suffering stops. If you intend for peace, if you intend for a world where this sort of unjustifiable suffering no longer needs to exist, no longer should exist, then you should support a ceasefire resolution to make sure that the innocent lives in Palestine are saved and to make sure that we do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Thank you, city council, for your time. My name is Eleni Katut. I stand before you as a representative of Palestinian resistance, struggle, and an unwavering connection to our homeland in Palestine. My family and many others were forcibly displaced from their home by the Zionist project in 1948. I was born and raised in San Bruno, and I feel grateful to have witnessed the love and compassion the city has for its diverse citizens, but I'm disappointed to see that a ceasefire resolution is not on the agenda for today, despite the expressed wishes of the public. For the past 66 days, we have all felt hopeless as we witness the horrors inflicted on the men, women, and children of Gaza by the settler colony of Israel. It's important to recognize that this violence has been longstanding and did not begin on October 7th. This also is not a conflict between Islam and Judaism, both of which are beautiful religions with a reverence for life and one's neighbor. My family is Christian, and they have been subjected to the violence of the Israeli state all the same. We continuously find ourselves being gaslit by politicians who, despite undeniable evidence, completely deny the horrific reality unfolding in Gaza. The firsthand accounts shared by our family members and any Gazan with a cellphone have shown the world the truth, which is why today, the United Nations voted 153 to 10 to demand a ceasefire in Gaza. It breaks my heart every time to watch the United States continually vote against a ceasefire despite 80% of registered Democrats and over 60% of the general electorate calling for a ceasefire. All of what I have told you is true, but I'm not asking for you to condemn what Israel is doing. We are only asking for you to call for a ceasefire and to end the human suffering. Enough is enough. Enough blood has been shed, enough children have become orphaned, enough children have lost their limbs. There is no justification for this brutality anymore. You may feel inclined to tell us that calling for a ceasefire or adding it to the agenda is outside of your purview, but I would like to remind you all that when Putin invaded Ukraine, San Bruno raised the Ukrainian flag. Councilman Hamilton, Councilman Salazar, and Mayor Medina, you are all up for reelection this coming year. Do not underestimate the interconnectedness of the Arab community in San Bruno. We all vote. If the ceasefire does not make it on the agenda before your winter break, I will do everything in my power to mobilize my community and make sure you are defeated in this next election. Please use your voices as a catalyst for peace and humanity. Keep Gaza in your prayers, and please take a step toward calling for a ceasefire in Gaza. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. No, folks, thank you for your comments. Next speakers, please.
Last four speakers are Maha Yaser Shahadi, Shahana, Kenda Dewa, and Ibrahim Abu Ghosh.
Good evening, council members. My name is Maha Yaser Shahadi, and I've been a resident here most of my life, and I'm a Capuchin High alumnus. We were in the same class, almost. I was born in Palestine, and my family immigrated here in the early '70s. Both my parents are Palestinian and lived through the Nakba, which is catastrophe in Arabic, where Palestinians suffered ethnic cleansing and displacement of over 750,000 Palestinians in 1948. Now, we are seeing in front of our eyes a continuation of the Nakba, a genocide at the hands of Israel and supported by our U.S. tax dollars. So far, 90% of the population, almost 2 million, have been displaced and nowhere to go. Over 20,000 people have been killed, almost half are children, and not counting those still under the rubble, and thousands injured, burned, and maimed. Whole families have been wiped off the face of the earth. My cousin lost 12 members of her family, seven of which are children, in the church bombing back in October. I know many people with similar stories. This indiscriminate carpet bombing is being carried out using U.S. weaponry. In early November, the U.S. passed a $14.3 billion military aid package for Israel on top of the $3.8 billion that the U.S. sends every year. With our money, Israel is bombing hospitals, schools, churches, mosques. Nowhere is safe. This is against international law, and Israel is continuing to commit war crimes without any accountability under the guise of self-defense. There is no justification for ever killing children, civilians, U.N. workers, press, medical staff. If the military doesn't kill them, then disease and starvation will. The people of Gaza have no food, water, fuel, shelter, and Israel is not allowing aid in, creating a devastating humanitarian crisis. Today, the U.N. General Assembly voted overwhelmingly to demand a humanitarian ceasefire in Gaza. And here in San Bruno, we need to follow suit. I urge you to support a resolution for a permanent ceasefire and stop the ethnic cleansing and genocide against the people of Palestine. Please do the right thing. This has to stop. Save innocent lives, every minute counts. Free Palestine.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next speaker, when you're ready, the timer will start.
Hello, everyone. My name is Shahana, and I'm a resident of San Bruno. I am not a Palestinian, and I don't think when human beings are killed, a genocide is happening, kids are starved, and 6,000, more than 6,000 children get killed, I don't think anyone needs to belong to that land to speak against the killing of human beings. So I am here to ask you, to demand you to bring the ceasefire resolution on the agenda. And as you are aware, more than 2/3 of Americans want an immediate and permanent ceasefire to end the ethnic cleansing and genocide in Gaza. This is a humanitarian crisis, and I request and demand you to stand on the right side of the history. We have lost 18,000 people, half of whom are children and women. How can we remain silent as human beings when innocent children are being starved, deprived of water, food, and medicine, when hospitals are being bombed and entire neighborhoods brought down to rubble? How did we, as human beings, come to this point where our moral grounds for human rights and justice become selective? Where we do everything possible to help Ukraine, and very rightfully so, but we do the opposite and become complicit in the genocide in Palestine? I request you to forget everything else and just think on humanitarian grounds. Calling for a ceasefire is the bare minimum this council can do to stand for humanity. And this is my request. Please call for an immediate permanent ceasefire to end the genocide in Gaza and the free flow of humanitarian aid to Gaza. And also here at home, as you know, Islamophobic hate crimes have increased 400% in Bay Area. Please make sure that our diversity of San Bruno is a safe place to live in for all the residents, irrespective of which religion or which ethnicity they belong. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments. And may we have our next speaker, please, and when you're ready, the timer will start.
Hello, council members. My name is Kenda Dewa. I have been a resident of San Bruno for 20 years. I have attended elementary, middle school, high school, and junior college in San Bruno. I got my first job in San Bruno. I am currently raising my toddler in San Bruno. Growing up here has been vital to my upbringing and is where I feel most at home. My lifelong friends were made here in the city of San Bruno. I was immediately able to connect with teachers, peers, community members because I was not the only Palestinian kid in class, but rather had a little community within all the schools I have been in. San Bruno has a thriving Palestinian population that contributes to the city's growth on a daily basis. We urge you to consider allowing a ceasefire resolution to be put on the agenda, not because it is an international issue, but rather one much closer to home. Please do not turn your backs on the Palestinians in your community. San Bruno, the city with the heart. Reassure us that your heart still beats for peace and for the fellow Palestinian constituents. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please. And when you're prepared, the timer will start.
Hello, my fellow citizens. My name is Ibrahim Abu Ghosh. I've lived in San Bruno my entire life. I'm a proud Palestinian-American without a Palestinian passport. For the last two months, we've waken up every day to atrocity after atrocity. The people of Gaza are terrified, and they understand they can die at any moment. That's not a life to live. You see, my father was born in a town called Abu Ghosh in West Jerusalem. Many people know West Jerusalem as the Jewish side of Jerusalem. I'm here to tell you that it wasn't always like that. In 1948, Jews consisted of 10% to 15% of Palestine, and the Zionists demanded 53% of the land. What happened next is what we Palestinians know as the Nakba, or the catastrophe. More than 750,000 people were displaced, more than 400 villages were wiped off the map, and 15,000 people were killed. My city barely made it and wasn't so lucky like its neighbor, Dadiyyasin, where 600 Palestinians were rounded up and massacred in the famous Dadiyyasin massacre. I mention this as a brief history of the Palestinian people. What a horrible history to constantly be reminded of, as a Palestinian, I may add. Imagine if that was your people's history. I mention this because today, you meet a Palestinian, and they say, "I'm Palestinian from America, Palestinian from Jordan, Palestinian from Canada, Palestinian from Egypt. It's time to let Palestinians live in their own land and not to be refugees." Over 20,000 civilians, including 7,000 children, have been crushed to death by the most advanced weaponry on the planet. It's time to speak up for humanity and say enough is enough. Stop the slaughter today. We ask the city of San Bruno to be on the side of humanity. Let Gaza live. Free Palestine.
Thank you very much for your comments.
I have no other speaker cards.
I want to just take a moment to thank everybody that's here and appreciate the courtesy and respect we've given to everyone that has spoke tonight. So thank you on that. And just to, I don't believe you're going to want to stay for the entire meeting, so to give an opportunity, we'll go ahead and take a few-minute break so that we can go ahead and everybody can go out if you want or remain. So we'll take a few-minute break, please. So, we'll take a few-minute break, please. Okay, we're back from recess. We concluded public comments for items on the agenda. We are now on item five, announcements and presentations. Item A: There is no regular city council meeting on the 4th Tuesday in December. The next regular city council meeting will be held on January 9, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. Item B: Issue proclamation to Battalion Chief Scott Walvogel for his 34 years of service to the San Bruno Fire Department and to the San Bruno community. At this time, there is a lot of "whereas's," but he has been here 34 years, so it was... It is to recognize Battalion Chief Scott Walvogel. Whereas the men and women who devote their time and energy to the duties of the fire prevention and suppression have assumed responsibilities essential for the safety of their fellow citizens and include among those individuals who have committed themselves to these difficult and dangerous endeavors. Battalion Chief Scott Walvogel of San Bruno Fire Department, who is retiring after unselfishly serving his community with great dedication, and it is appropriate at this time to recognize the hazardous work, serious responsibilities, and strong commitment that is willingly accepted during his 34-plus years with the city of San Bruno, including six years with the San Bruno Parks and Recreation Department, seven years as a volunteer firefighter, and 26 years as a career firefighter, extended to him the special honors and greatest commendations of the people of the city of San Bruno in the state of California. And whereas the San Bruno Fire Department maintains a dedicated, professionally-trained corps of firefighters who risk their own lives to protect life, property, and the unique environment of our community, giving their time, and whereas inspiring others through his dedication to the community for over 26 years as a career firefighter, Battalion Chief Scott Walvogel has distinguished himself as a firefighter, paramedic, fire captain, and battalion chief, and provided leadership to the San Bruno Fire Department as acting fire chief, and also shared his wise counsel as a member of the San Bruno Fire Department, utilizing his talent and skills to guide the efforts of the department in better serving the community. And whereas, over the years, Battalion Chief Scott Walvogel has participated in both local and statewide mutual aid efforts, including the response to the San Bruno gas pipeline explosion and fire. And whereas, with bold initiative and results-oriented vision, Battalion Chief Scott Walvogel was instrumental in developing the city of San Bruno's first CERT training program. And whereas Battalion Chief Scott Walvogel was awarded the 2013 Liberty Mutual Fire Mark Award for community service, recognizing his work to develop San Bruno's CERT team, bringing $10,000 to the city of San Bruno to support the community's preparedness. And whereas Battalion Chief Scott Walvogel has served as the chair of the San Mateo County Fire Chiefs Operations Group for the past year. And whereas Battalion Chief Scott Walvogel was a dynamic role model for all people who believe strongly in their obligation to improve the quality of life for future generations. And whereas, as a dedicated and public service Battalion Chief Scott Walvogel is the true character of the brave men and women who devote their careers to selfishness and prestigious duties of the fire service. And now, therefore, I, Rico Medina, Mayor of the city of San Bruno, do hereby recognize the Battalion Chief Scott Walvogel to be honored for his well-earned retirement, commend for providing the highest level of service and protection to his community, and do by extend the sincere gratitude and appreciation of the public. Signed, Rico Medina. Chief Walvogel, if you would step forward, and Chief Ari Delay, if you would step forward. And as I come down, the chief will have a few words.
But I just wanted to say thank you to Chief Walvogel, to me coming in the organization as a new chief. He was instrumental in making me successful as chief here and serving the community, both myself, the members of the San Bruno Fire Department. We all owe you a debt of gratitude. And most importantly, I would say, the community that we serve, you know, really owes you a debt of gratitude. Scott has served this community for many, many years, and his heart's here, and he protects this community every single day. So, I just wanted to say thank you very much for your work.
And was acknowledged within the proclamation, but Scott was also one of the three firefighters that was first on the scene in the 210 pipeline explosion. And so, that is something that, you know, I can always be appreciative and thankful, and I know that was not easy for all of us, and especially you. And I know with your deep love and conviction to San Bruno, to your family, and to the job that you do, I think the team would say, "You've done well. You'll be welcome. The locks will be changed, but you will be welcome to us and to the team that's back here. Thank you as well." And so, chief, congratulations. Well-deserved, and I appreciate all that you've done for the city of San Bruno.
Thank you, Mayor. Honorable Mayor, City Council, city staff. I think I'm unique, where I'm a product of this city. We moved here with my family not far from Daly City back in October of 1977. From then, I've been entrenched in the community. I've played soccer here. I've played 11 years of baseball. I went to school here. My first couple jobs were here. I delivered the, for the people who know, I delivered the San Bruno Herald. Anybody? San Bruno Herald. I was a Peewee umpire. I worked at Long's Drugs. My first boss here was someone by the name of Rico Medina at the Parker Rec Department. So, my last boss here would be somebody that I've known for well over 25 years. I met Ari way back in the day of taking tests throughout the Fire Department. It's kind of a network. But, you know, my whole life has revolved around the city of San Bruno. My son, even though I live in San Mateo, my son went to school here. My son played baseball here. This city means something. It's weird. People who grew up here, San Bruno is almost like their passion, and it's just odd how that transpires, and you may not see that in other cities. But it's been a gratifying career. I will be missing, you know, the guys. I'll be missing the guys around the table, guys and girls around the table, the camaraderie, solving the world's problems. I will not miss sleeping in a little bed anymore, getting up in the middle of the night and getting to sleep in the morning probably be the best thing ever. At the end of the day, I feel as if this city and this department was the perfect fit for me. I hope the city can look the same way. Where I was a perfect fit for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Wally. Item C. Before, I'm going to ask the Vice Mayor to take this before the presentation of item C. I have a financial interest due to the location of my home, and because of that proximity and my personal residence, I'm going to turn the meeting over for chair to our Vice Mayor, Hamilton, and I'm going to leave the dais, and I'm going to join those folks in the back.
Thank you. So, we're moving on to item C, receive a presentation on the Tanfran for San Bruno, Community Engagement Process and Revised Preliminary Project Application. And we have the report from staff, please.
Yes. Good evening, Vice Mayor, City Council members, and greetings, planning commissioners. I know you came for the joint study session on streamlining and changing planning processes in the city zoning code, but tonight you'll hear this presentation first on the Tanfran project. My name's Darcy Smith. I'm the Assistant City Manager, and I've been working on this project for a few years now, and I'll just lay out our agenda, but I promise you, this is a brief presentation overall. First, I'll give the city presentation, which will cover the objective for this item, a little bit of background on the project, and overview of the city-led community engagement processes, which have been ongoing for about a year now. And I'll close with the timeline and next steps. And then, the developers' representatives, Jesse Nelson and Taricia Nemeth, from the property owner and developer Alexandria Real Estate Equities, will make a presentation on the revised preliminary project application, which was just submitted a few weeks ago. The original application was submitted about a year ago, but they provided an update, which they are very excited to review with you tonight. So, then, the city council will provide comments and questions on both of our presentations, and we'll end with time to accept any public comments. So, with that, this is an informational update. We're not here to seek any feedback or input. We'll have plenty of time for that later, I promise, as this will be a long process, as you'll see. But this is just to provide an update on both the city-led community engagement process, which has, again, been ongoing for about a year, and we have more planned for the next year, and then the revised preliminary project application by the developer. But I just want to set the stage of how important this project is to the city's future, and this is really a multi-year planning effort, but the construction of sites like this, 44 acres, they can take decades. They can take, you know, 10, 20 years. So, what we do now is setting the stage for many of your future commissioners and future council members and mayors. And it's important to our future as an economic engine. So, I can't stress enough, this isn't just about, you know, really attractive buildings and creating jobs. It's about creating economic driver for the city's future through property tax revenue, sales tax revenue, business tax revenue, and more importantly, we have to provide housing, which you all know, commissioners, you've been doing great work on the housing element, as has the council, and this is a great site for housing for a variety of reasons. I'm really proud that the Association of Bay Area Governments, or ABAG, Executive Board, just last month designated this as a priority site for housing. It's close to transit, as you know, but this is important because it makes this eligible for some important regional funding for the affordable housing component, and then site infrastructure on the site. It's quite expensive to install all the utilities on this site, and this makes it eligible because this is where, you know, ABAG wants to see growth in areas like this, right near transit, and also where the city wants to see growth. You may not know, commissioners, that what the councils knows is they get budget updates, but we have seen long declining revenue from this project, from the mall itself, and we're working hard to identify revenue sources for the city. It's a lot of work that the council will be doing in the future, and there's challenges to the city's tax base across the board. So, we really have to look at sites like this as creating new sources of revenue for the city, ongoing revenue, which really supports the city's basic operating budget. And as I mentioned, this site, you just can't honestly get a better site. It's right on the Bay Area station. It's a short walk or short bike or scooter ride to the Caltrain Station, and it's on a major bus line. So, it's really a perfect development site for those reasons. So, the city council took a big leadership role in this project back in July 2021. They adopted a fact sheet that laid out the city's vision for it, and I'll just mention that that vision for the redevelopment was as what you'll see from the developers' presentation, you know, a modern, mixed-use, transitory development with office, housing, retail, entertainment. And the city set a minimum amount of housing of 1,000 units, and the developer responded to that, which is great to see. So, a little bit about what the city has been doing for community engagement. Last year, we worked with Singer Associates, who are here to... Last year, we worked with Singer Associates, who are here tonight, Adam Alberti, the city's community engagement and communications consultant. We worked together to build a really exciting website under the banner of Tanfran for San Bruno. It's tanfranforSanBruno.com to keep the community informed and solicit input throughout the process. So in addition to the website for virtual participation, I know many of you have gone to the Public Engagement Center inside the shops at Tanfran and we'll be holding more events there next year. We also published a community priorities progress report last spring based on some of that engagement and what the community engagement showed, and we looked broad at community priorities showed, a lot of excitement for what a project like this can provide. They're excited about job creation. They're excited about infrastructure improvements. They're excited about onsite private open space that's publicly accessible, which you'll see in the developers' update. So they're excited about a lot of what this can provide. And again, we'll continue the engagement. In 2024, we'll have what we had last year, which are drop-in open house events. Again, this, this is a big, amazing space. If you haven't been there, I hope you can come to these open house events. But what our goals are for the early 2024 events are to continue that conversation around how important this is to San Bruno's future and what goals and priorities this project can provide and then provide obviously more opportunities to learn about those community priorities progress report and the project, especially given some of the changes that were just made to the project, to respond to that community engagement and report findings. So we don't have the dates finalized, but we'll be sure and update them on our website, the social media, and we also send postcards out to every address in the, in the city. But word of mouth is actually the best way to, to get people's attention. So a quick update on the timeline, you know, you'll hear the Community Engagement Director Gilli present next about ways to speed this up. And I can tell you that what's the big driver here is CEQA moving forward, the California Environmental Quality Act, which that's a state law, can't change that dramatically. This project is so big, it needs the biggest environmental document, which as you know, is an environmental impact report, and that just takes many, many months to prepare. The good news is we're in the middle of this process. We're doing the CEQA review and technical analysis now. And again, we'll do more engagement on the application heading into next year and hopefully if all goes according to plan, the project approval will be back before you next summer. But again, the state processes with CEQA drive a lot of the schedule. So as much as I'd love to trim some months, we work within those state procedural requirements. So I'll end with the next steps. We'll continue reviewing this revised application to ensure it's in alignment with the city expectation, the city code requirements, as well as other requirements. But again, what we're seeing so far is it responds to the fact sheet, which again goes back two and a half years, and then more recently, the community engagement by the city earlier this year in the progress report. CEQA works underway. I actually get excited when we achieve big milestones like the notice of preparation, which should be released in the next week. And then coming back before the Planning Commission at your January meeting will be the scoping meeting. You've had a few of those lately, so I think you know it's, it's again procedural, but it's a good opportunity to solicit any comments, input from the community early on in the CEQA process. And then again, we'll have the Public Engagement Center open house events in 2024. So that concludes my brief presentation and turn it over to the development team. And I'm available to answer any questions later, along with Adam Alberti, who I introduced, and Lisa Costa Sanders from Good City Company, who's the city's planning consultant on it. So with that, I'll turn it over to the developers' representatives to make their presentation.
Thank you, Darcy. Good evening, council members and Commissioners. I'm Jesse Nelson, Senior Vice President and Regional Market Director for Alexandria Real Estate Equities. As Darcy mentioned, we own Tanfran and along with our partner, Strata Investment Group, we are the developer and applicant for the reimagined Tanfran project. I'd like to introduce my colleagues, Tretia Nemeth, who is on point for our community engagement process, and Toon Jordan, who will be leading our development activities for this project. Also, Michael Cohen with, with Strata is here with us this evening. Tretia is going to walk through the changes and enhancements that we've made to the site plan over the last year. But before she does that, I just want to convey to you that Alexandria remains very committed to this project. No question, there have been a number of macroeconomic challenges that have impacted projects like this and made big projects much more challenging to undertake over the past year. That includes higher interest rates and a supply and demand imbalance with both office and lab across the entire region that have made big projects challenging. All that said, we think Tanfran is a pretty special site that we're committed to long-term and excited that we think we can work together here with you to create something that the entire San Bruno community can be very proud of. So with that, we'll let Tretia walk you through the, the changes.
Great. Thank you.
I need to repeat myself. I'm Strata's client. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, council members, Planning Commissioners. It's really nice to have you all together, actually. I think it's a great opportunity for you to be introduced to this really important project in the city of San Bruno. We have been here before and some of what I'm going to say, it may seem repetitive, but the reality is that a project of this scale and this nature sometimes takes a couple of iterations to get it right. So that's why we're here again. As Jesse mentioned, we are very committed to this site. There's many reasons for it, but a lot of it is location, right? And you may have heard, real estate is about location, location, location. And this site has that. It's both the access from BART, from the freeways, proximity to Caltrain, and quite honestly, a really wonderful community that you have here in San Bruno. We've been hearing that tonight over and over again, and so we know that this is a great place to invest in. We take these projects very seriously and we really work at the outset, upfront, very carefully on what are the guiding principles for these sites. This site in particular, obviously, is going to be a mixed-use, transit-focused location. But more than that, we want it to be vibrant. We want it to be a place where people are going to gather and come together in San Bruno and have an opportunity to recreate, be entertained, shop, work, and live. So it's really going to be like the heart of this community, of this section of the community. We have the commitment to provide at least 1,000 units of housing. It may be more and we'll talk about that here in a minute. We really are committed to sustainability. This is something that's very important to us as a company, but I think is also very important to your community. It is going to be, as Assistant City Manager mentioned, an economic engine, a driver for your community to really create opportunities for the next industries that are going to provide jobs for the young folks in your community. And of course, we want to pay attention to the history. There is a lot in that site that, some of it is not happy history, but it's important to acknowledge it and it's important to make sure that it is not swept under the rugs. So those are all some of the principles that we've used over the course of the last year to put together a plan that we originally submitted as a preliminary project application. Then we received comments from your city staff, who really considered what we put in front of them and gave us some really great feedback. And then the community engagement process also provided a lot of data for us to really understand what was important for us to tweak in this plan. So what I have here in front of you is really not a completely redone plan from what we had submitted before, but one that is really much more in tune and kind of streamlined, if you will. So some of the changes that we made, I'll start actually from the bottom. Improved site circulation. This really was important because you want to make sure that people are able to get to and through the site in a variety of ways, automobile, pedestrian, and bicycle. Sometimes it's hard to manage that, but I think we have come with, to a plan that actually provides a lot of flexibility for that. The next thing is that it really creates, we, we kind of changed the organization of the central open space. Before it was sort of east to west, now we've reoriented it because in part, it actually provides more ability for the sun to come into that kind of space. And so it becomes a much more enjoyable environment for people to be in. We continue to have a maximum of 2 million square feet of a commercial campus. That's the ability to develop that much commercial space, but potentially it would be less and we'll talk about that here in a minute. A minimum of 1,000 new units of housing, so this is in conformance with the reimagined Tanfran plan, as well as improving the access to the existing cinemas, which today you can only access through the mall. So obviously, when the mall goes away, the access to the cinema has to be addressed. And we are proposing a new location for Target, to really build them a new building at the corner of El Camino and Snee. This is something that we are working carefully with Target about. It's essentially up to them to agree to the location and we think that we have great communication with them, but we, you know, have to be open that that's not yet set in stone. It's our idea. So that is the key changes to the plan. If you recall the prior plan, it's really not that different. So why has it taken so long to, to come to this? Well, a lot of times, as I said, this is iterative, right? It's a very large project. It takes a long time to work through and to think through all of the pieces. For instance, there's air traffic that happens over that site. So SFO, the FAA, all have restrictions on how much height and there's different heights at different places of the site, so all of that has to be analyzed. That's a lot of the work that we've been doing to really technically be able to provide the data necessary to prepare the CEQA analysis, the EIR. So this is a quick view of what a three-dimensional massing of that site would look like. And just to bring up the point that I think one of the comments from the community engagement report was the need for open space, the need for spaces where people in San Bruno could be outside and could potentially go shopping or sit and have a coffee outside with their families and be in a really nice environment. And we think we've provided a variety of spaces that could potentially provide for those uses. And this summarizes that we're 10 and a half acres of that site, of that 44 acres, would be devoted to open space. That's a significant amount and we think that's important because that's part of what creates a there, there, if you will. Now let me back up for a minute because Assistant City Manager, Darcy, mentioned something and it's important to note. This is potentially a 20-year project to build out. And so as Jesse also mentioned, market conditions change. They change all the time. We see it often. It's a cycle. Real estate is very, very cyclical and it, it kind of lags behind, right? So when things improve, it takes a little while of time for the real estate market to come back. When things go down, it takes some time. So what's really important, we've decided, is to provide some flexibility. So what we're proposing is that the plan be organized in a way that allows for flexibility to be responsive to changing market conditions. So there's a set amount of things that would happen on the site and those are the ones that are shown in color here. It includes the new Target, it includes the cinema, it includes the central green and village, retail village. It includes the minimum of 1,000 units of housing, as well as a component of a life science campus on the far left corner. So those are the things that we know for sure, within a certain period of time, would be built. Would they all get built at the same time? Not necessarily. Potentially, it's multiple projects going within that area as a period of time, then a little bit of time passes and then more. But what's important is those areas that are marked out as flex, that are outlined in the dotted red area, we think are probably later phases. And we don't have enough visibility, or I like to say, my crystal ball broke. It's still in the shop, so I can't tell you exactly what's going to happen with the market in 10, 15 years. So what we think is important is in those two areas to allow some flexibility. So the CEQA analysis is going to test different things. It's going to test the possibility that maybe there is additional housing instead of so much of the life science space. Or it's going to test that maybe there's a hotel and maybe at that point in time, a hotel use makes sense to build on this site, which was very centrally located and that could also benefit the community and quite honestly, be a fiscal benefit to your city. So those are all the pieces that we're going to continue to evaluate over time to bring forward a plan that is able to respond to changing market conditions without breaking, right? So you plan ahead for change. So that's what we are proposing in this revised PPA. And then we have some images of what this place could look like, right? It's really about creating a place where people can come together, where they can sit with their families and have a lovely time, have a place where they can live and be close by, ability to go to the cinemas, get to BART. Target continues to be there, of course, in a new location. And so it really becomes the heart, the living room of San Bruno. So with that, we would love to answer any questions you might have. We really look forward to the NOP being issued this week because that really kicks things off and then we'll be with you for the scoping session in January.
All right. Thank you. So first we'll do, we'll have questions from, from council members and then Commissioners, questions on the presentation itself. And then once we get through those, then we can, we can open for, for discussion and comments and then we'll open it up for public comment. So that's the order of operations. So first, let's see if we have any questions from council members on the presentation we just received.
Sure.
Councilmember Medina.
It's kind of question, comment, kind of territory. So because understandably, the change is based on the market and it's always been the market. I know when we first were talking about, about this, we were hearing, well, you need more housing there, right? And it's like, well, the market decides that, the developer decides that. We, we put a bottom limit in our FAQ of what we expected for this development and we're, we're very excited that Alexandria came in and to meet this. And so for me, it's understandable that with this change. And so how is the timeline? We heard that the limit of the 20 years, but what, what, what could, how long will the tenants be there at the mall? That's, that's the question I have, I hear from our communities, like, well, how long is this going to be? And it's like, well, we don't know yet until the developer kind of figures out exactly what they want to do. So what, whatever you can do to help explain to the community of when things will kind of start happening, just, you know, within a few quarters or so, just so that, I think that'd be very helpful, helpful to the community.
No, you're absolutely right. We, we are going to be meeting with mall tenants and giving them a timeline. It's essentially, they're going to get...
Two years?
Yeah. Two years to know that, they have two years to continue to operate their business there because CEQA takes time, getting prepped to build takes time. So that is the time.
So I have a kind of a general question and it might be way too, I'm, I'm not asking for an answer in stone, but I'm just trying to get a sense of, you know, the, the flexible approach is very, very smart. Typically in, in other projects in the past or whatever, when you have large areas that are going to be developed much later, especially, you know, you know, there's the one area to the southeast that's large, but it's kind of tucked away at the back of the site, but there's one that's right, you know, right dead center, right next to Target. What do you, what do projects like this tend to do with that space during that time when you're waiting to figure out what's going to happen if all the others, if all the other things are built?
Well, there's a variety of ways of handling it, right? But you could do temporary art installations, you could do good landscape, you could do a really nice fence, quite honestly, and just... a really nice fence, quite honestly, and just kind of put information around it. There's ways to handle it. That is the worst-case scenario, put it that way, right?
Sure. All right, thank you. All right, any questions on the presentation from our commissioners? Commissioner Herman.
Hey, good evening. Thank you for the presentation. You know, I'm, with the mall having been in decline for a while, I'm really happy to see things happening with it. Is it correct that the Target is still showing up as just the three stories? Are there any negotiations ongoing with them to use whatever the space is above their building up to the FAA limits? Because it does seem like, you know, once that's built, it's going to be there for 30 to 50 years, and having that many sort of just cubic feet of air sitting there that close to the BART station seems a shame.
Yeah, I hear you, and it is a discussion that we have had with Target. They do need parking, and then a fairly tall space, right? So there isn't as much space wasted, if you will, above, as you would think. Is it possible? Sure. And those conversations can continue to happen. So far, they've indicated they would not want to do that, and they have the ability to decide not to.
Yeah.
I guess is the best way.
Their own lease, and so they have the leverage on that.
That's correct.
If there's a profitable use of the space, and they can be, you know, paid the profits, you'd think that, as a large company, they would enjoy having more money. The other question I have was, we keep seeing the office space discussed in square feet. I'm wondering when we would start to see estimates of, like, how many jobs, how many either people that live and work, or commute in, like, did we not see that until the EIR comes out?
The EIR, pretty quickly, will have that information.
To six-ish months, something like that, a year?
Yeah, probably six months or so before the information starts coming out.
All right, thank you.
But, I mean, it's pretty easy to imagine, if you think about 2 million square feet divided by 300 to 400 square foot per person, that's about the number.
I mean, I have looked this up. I looked up what the square feet per job were for a number of projects in South San Francisco, and, you know, made some estimates of it myself. But it is, like, it depends heavily on sort of like, how much is lab space versus how much is administrative space?
Exactly.
Because the lab space is a bunch of, you get a quite wide range.
Exactly.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Coon.
Thank you. Actually, my question's similar to Commissioner Harmon's. Can you describe the basis for the density that you're building here? You know, like you mentioned, the Target's only three stories with the associated parking structure. The kiddie-corner residential's only four stories. It appears that you've left some density on the table. Can you go into some detail, you know, why, where each height is at, or density is at, and why you've done it that way?
So a lot of the height is actually driven by a combination of things. One is the FAA limitation. The other is the height limits in the city of San Bruno, which set certain height limits. And then, the third is the type of construction that you're doing. So if you're doing life science space, actually, the floor-to-floor heights are very tall. So it seems like it's fewer floors, but it's a lot of height, right? So it's looking at all of those pieces. And then, it's a question of responding to the market, and what does the market want at this location? Is this a location where you're going to have high-rise housing, and will the market respond to that?
Okay. So then, to go on a point, you did say that there are locations that the height limits in San Bruno are also limiting you?
Yes.
Okay.
For sure.
Thank you. Any other questions on the presentation from commissioners? Okay, I actually thought, oh, I'm so sorry.
I was trying to decide whether this was a more general discussion topic or on the presentation, but, I mean, we're discussing the flex zone, which I'm very, I'm very happy to see introduced. I don't know how much you've, there are sort of ongoing developments in the market where there is flexibility in the design, where they're essentially designing for adaptive reuse. So you have a frame that essentially modules can be hung within, and you can seriously swap out sort of the entire structure of, you know, this was labs, and we're just going to pull that whole thing out, and it's been designed from the beginning, so that sort of the plumbing hookups and blah, 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 you can essentially drop in a module that is now housing, or a hotel, or whatever. And that, you know, because it is new, there's sort of additional expense, upfront investment. Hopefully, as that style of construction becomes more common, prices will come down. But it, you're buying with your upfront cost flexibility to adapt to the market, you know, I mean, like, not just in terms of over the next 10 years, as things get built, but the next 50 years, as the buildings are there. And so, it is potentially a more secure revenue stream, because, you know, you have an office market bust, you can, within two, three years, just completely pivot the building. And this sort of thing seems like a win-win, both for the developer and for the city, because you don't have blighted offices sitting there, not generating activity. And so, I don't know how much attention your team is paying to that kind of thing, and what, you know, that I feel like it's a good option to look at in terms of designing and building flexibly.
No, it's a good idea. I think we're a little bit earlier in the phasing to get to that yet.
I actually thought of one more question, so sorry for going out of the order that I already said we were going to do. Oh, and you have one, too? Okay. So my assumption, and I want to, I don't like to assume, so, my assumption is because of Target having a lease, and because of where Target is now, and where Target is proposed to be, assuming that that comes to fruition, is the idea that Target will remain open while the new Target is built, and then move over, and then...
Precisely.
Okay. And then, during that time, is the mall still open, or is the mall being demoed at that time as well?
The mall would be being demoed at that time as well.
Okay. I couldn't, sometimes it's hard to tell, you know, where things overlap.
In part, quite honestly, is how do you continue to operate the mall with Target gone, and it just, it diminishes the activity.
I was meaning when, while Target is still open, while new Target is being built, that period.
Yeah, well, I think that's a detail. It depends where we are in that two-year timeline.
So we'll see.
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Medina.
Yes. So this question is because somebody else kind of asked it, and your answer was height limits. So I wonder if you could differentiate between, is it the FAA limit, or is it San Bruno height limit? And how much height would you need to get, to have more flexibility?
Okay, I don't know how to answer the last question, but I can tell you that the San Bruno height limit is measured from grade. So if you've got grade here, right, you've got this much height. But if grade is down here, you've got, you know, different heights. So it kind of varies across the site. The FAA limit is kind of a ceiling. So the FAA limit is probably the highest that would allow us to go higher than the San Bruno city limit. I'm not sure how much, 10 feet, 15 feet? It's not, it's not that much.
Right. So I'm asking to kind of figure out, how can we help to provide additional flexibility?
Yeah, to answer the question is, I don't know, if you were to say, no height limits, right? You can go as high as you want. Then the FAA is going to regulate us, and we're not going to get that much more.
Got it. So there is approximately 10 feet that may be somewhere there?
It might be more than, it might be less than that.
Okay. So that would be something that the city would have to do, to go ahead and get the voters to approve the height limit?
And I think it was a voter initiative, right?
Yes.
So...
Darcy Smith, Assistant City Manager. Important to note, the original 1977 Ordinance 1284 was not placed before the voters. It was adopted by the City Council in lieu of going before the voters, but it acts essentially as if it went to the voters. So any changes have to go to the voters, and there was a special ballot measure in 1982 that changed these heights and increased them. Because they're not three stories like the rest of the city, right? 50 feet. We're studying this issue, because as you know, through our housing element, we have to study it for housing in the city, as required, strongly encouraged, I should say, by HCD. So we can certainly look at this, but I'm not sure you get enough to make it really worthwhile to pose that question before the voters at this point in time, but we'll continue to look at it. Because what we're seeing is the market's changing, and the story can definitely make a difference in the economic feasibility of a project.
And so then, as staff is looking into this, as we prepare for the EIR, you want to go with the maximum? So that you don't, I mean, the whole point is, what's the most impact?
Yeah, and that's why Ms. Nemeth pointed out, you know, we're looking at these flex uses, and we're looking at a high volume. Often, when you add stories, you kind of shrink the footprint, right? You might have more open space. So there's still kind of a carrying capacity to a site. You don't, you can't magically just add an extra couple hundred units. There's a market maximum, and we think the numbers are right. As she said, there's a base, and then there's additional flex units. And I'll say, in the NOSA preparation, which we're working on right now and should be out soon, that will have Fleshy's maximums out in a little more detail. But the height issue is something we're definitely studying across the city. It's a housing item that we're looking at, and we can certainly look at it for this site, but I'm not sure you're going to, we would necessarily want to adjust the maximum program up a lot, because again, the site kind of has a natural carrying capacity based on the market.
Understood. And so, the basis of the question is, what can the council do to assist with maximizing a win-win-win for the developer, the city, and, you know, the community and economic engine? So whatever we can do to provide a little more feel for that, we'd definitely be interested in looking forward to that analysis. So thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
All right, thank you. So before we move on to comments, any follow-up questions from anyone? Okay, so now, any comments? Any comments from council members?
No, no, I was just waiting. I'm ready. I was just...
Do you have any comments?
If anybody had, nothing?
Come in a way.
No, I just wanted to let everyone know how excited, how exciting this is. When, I go to the mall almost every other day, if not every day. There's a Planet Fitness there, and it's just kind of like, I see sometimes that there's some USA markings there, and they removed an AT&amp;T vault or something against the building, and just wanted to let Alexandria know how appreciative of this flexibility, of that, as the market's changing, it may, it may be the best thing as we go forward. So just wanted to encourage everyone, and to have an open mind, and for recommendation to help our community is like, anything that can be done to kind of show a tentative schedule, just to kind of have an understanding of, well, if the EIR got approved at this point, demo would be this, and like, what is here, what is there? That would also help the businesses there to kind of think about, hey, maybe it's the time to relocate and come downtown. Our downtown has around 10 vacancies, so it would be nice to be able to, be able to retain those businesses and provide them an opportunity to, you know, stay home. So thank you all very much.
So Councilmember Medina stole most of my comments, so I will, I'll just say, you know, I echo his excitement for having Alexandria as a partner in San Bruno for this important project. Any comments from our planning commissioners? Commissioner Herman.
I do want to just sort of echo what's been said around the height limit. I mean, it is, we're going to be discussing it on the housing element item real soon, but like, there literally is a program to consider what locations we want to include for raising the heights, and like, maybe, you know, like, maybe it doesn't get us a lot to just like, uncapped, just basically say, Tanfran, you can do whatever you want up to the FAA limit. Maybe that doesn't make a big difference, but it can't hurt. And so, I, it just seems like a sensible thing to do.
Thank you. Any other comments from commissioners? Commissioner Coon.
Yeah, my impression of the site is actually that it's an island. And what I mean, you know, nowadays, you drive there, and it doesn't have a connection to the adjacent parcels, right, to the town center, to the homes directly to the east of it. For that reason, it, there's no reason to not just release the height limit, right? That being an island as it is, it's not really going to impact any neighbors in a negative way. So I would urge staff and our City Council, please, take immediate action, just unleash it. Turning back to our applicants, though, because it is an island, and it ought to not be that way, it ought to be part of an urban village. Some bad examples is Bishop Branch in San Ramon, if you're familiar. That's way too much of an island, that's awful. Getting a little bit better, you have Hillsdale Mall, where they've sort of taken that transition to create some kind of neighborhood, and especially on the backside. I'm hoping that you can do better. The town center directly to the north and near South San Francisco, that's also San Bruno. That's next, right? And I hope you can work with our staff, be very creative, and think of how this might change together over the next 20 years, and how they can come together and feel like one of the whole, also with all of the neighboring properties. I would ask staff, as you're working with the applicants, please be extremely aggressive and creative in what you do, and look for concessions, like the height limit. Don't think within the box when it's talking about, like, transit connections, how people get in and out of the site, even via cars. Don't stick to even just the streetlights and where they are. If the map has to be redrawn, I think it's a good time to do that, because, you know, we're talking about billions of dollars spent, so you might as well do it now, and get it done for the future. Just, let's get it done right this one time. We don't have another chance.
Thank you. Any other comments from our planning commissioners? Okay, so we will open it up for public comment. Are there any speaker cards on this item?
I have no speaker cards for any items under announcements and presentations.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Yep.
Hi, everybody. My name is Thomas Joseph. I live in southern San Bruno. I work in biotech in South San Francisco, actually, at an Alexandria property. Pretty cool to see you guys here. I had two quick questions. Hopefully, you guys can answer them. I know, I'm pretty sure Huntington Avenue is much lower than El Camino. So there's, like you guys are saying, there is a grade within the area. And so, I'm just kind of surprised that you have a single number for the answer to how much more height you can get, right? Because there's more height on the Huntington side than the El Camino side, so I'm just wondering, is it 10 on the west, and then 20 on the east, or is it, on average, 10? And then, the other question, I've seen this council deny development in the city because of traffic concerns, so I just want to make sure those things get addressed for the council and the community. What are we doing to prepare? A lot more people are going to be driving on San Bruno Avenue. We're going to clog up 380, you know, to the 101 and then the 280 because of the El Camino exit. I'm happy for this project. I'm not saying I'm against it because of this question, but I just want to make sure that is being addressed ahead of time with all the government partners that have to address that.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers who wish to speak on this item?
Hi, everybody. I'm Rebecca Milano. I own the One Love Cafe, and I'm a very new business owner, so while my children have been around, and I live in the adjacent community of South San Francisco, this is my very first experience with being part of the politics here in San Bruno, and I like to come and listen. I've been very curious, as a consumer and as a long-term resident, what is happening with Tanfran. As the downtown is uniting to try to get the merchants to organize, to improve downtown, we were also considering the merchants in Tanfran. And, you know, I don't know what was going on. I recently posted something on Facebook, because I saw the Tanfran Engagement Center that had been the first... because I saw the Tanfran Engagement Center, that had been the first time that I had seen it, and we were kind of just, I was not clear. So I was really happy to hear this presentation today. What I'm not really thrilled to hear is all of the focus on, you know, big business. I feel like San Bruno is not a town that supports small business, like I've said many times. There's no Chamber of Commerce here, there's no real direction for new business owners. That's great that we're going to redevelop Tanfran, but what about the people that are there now? I can see, it was reported today, that fiscally, Tanfran not being helped as it is right now. I spoke to the people at SureTeak, they've been there for 30 years. So it's kind of unfortunate that the town, while it's focusing on redevelopment, continues to forget about the little businesses. So those people are there, and while we're seeing Ceramoni even thrive, right, there's been redevelopment of Ceramoni Mall, there's been bigger businesses that have been brought in there, those businesses are booming, there's got a lot of traffic going on. We're over here talking about a 20-year-long plan for Tanfran when, you know, we could have a nice little mall here. And even in the meantime, it doesn't sound like there's a lot of plan for the merchants that are currently there that are struggling now because there's nothing going on in Tanfran. You see a bunch of empty storefronts, there's a nice little thing about engagement with Tanfran, but there's not enough communication. I feel very bad for the merchants that are there. Again, like, I don't want to, I didn't know that San Bruno was such a big business-focused town, otherwise maybe I would have taken my little business to another town that has more support. So I just wanted to say, please don't forget about downtown. Downtown is the heart of this town, not Tanfran, not Bay Hill. Downtown is what I think is a good representation of what this town really stands for, not Google, not Amazon. This is a very different community that we have here, it's a very special community. So I would just like to ask the developers here to remember that and to be considerate of the small businesses that have been long-term tenants of Tanfran, and those of us that have been going to Tanfran for all of our lives. So thank you, that's my piece.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Okay, well, closed public comment. Regarding the questions that Mr. Joseph asked, are we prepared to answer that, answer those now, or are those things that we can follow up? Mr. Joseph later, we can get his information.
So we can certainly, we're aware of the grade differential, we can look into how much height would help. I've often heard that it's the FAA height limit that dictates everything in this area of town, so just rather than futzing around how much might be feasible, it's, might be appropriate, just if we were studying it to just match the FAA limits. Those rarely change, although I wish they would faster. And then the traffic state, so this site is so close to transit, it's exempt from the SEQA thresholds for significant impacts to traffic. That said, our general plan, circulation element, has some level of service goals on policies, and so the city's traffic consultant, Fair and Peers, already took traffic counts and is busy doing their wizardry behind the scenes with traffic analysis. But that said, we're, you know, we're just in a new era where under SEQA, there's not big traffic, city infrastructure, street changes that are necessitated by SEQA. As you know, projects pay our impact fees, and then we use those monies to fund important things to the city, like pet and bike improvements, implementation of our walk and bike plan, and our safe routes to school plan, and we look at those projects, I think you know, citywide. Gone are the days where we can really, you know, add a lot of capacity on our streets, but we carefully look at little tweaks to intersections and adding bike and pet improvements to improve circulation and trips for everyone, and all types of active transportation modes. But that will all be in this exciting thing called the environmental impact report.
All right, thank you, Assistant City Manager. Okay, that brings us to the end of this item. We will welcome back Mayor Benita and Director, and Director Madden to move on to our next item. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you to the Vice Mayor, thank you to everyone else. So what we're going to do now is, we've concluded with the announcements and presentations, we're going to move into the study session. So I will now call to order the joint city council and planning commission study session.
The roll call for the city council withstand, I will now conduct the planning commission and roll call. Commissioner Biassodi.
Here.
Commissioner Harmon.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Leving.
Here.
Commissioner Kuhn.
Here.
Vice Chair Drazo.
Here.
And Chair Madden.
Here.
Item 6A is conduct a joint city council planning commission study session and provide feedback on proposed municipal code amendments to improve the planning permitting process.
Thank you very much. Now we'll hear from staff, Director?
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, Honorable Chair, members of the planning commission. I'm Peter Gilli, I'm the Community Development Director, and I'm pleased to be here tonight to present this item. I have, there we go. And this is the agenda, it's the standard agenda, go through the objective, the background, the proposed changes, schedule, and takeaways and questions. The objective tonight is to present the proposed changes to improve the planning permitting process, which will implement city council strategic initiative 10.1 to expand and improve the productivity of the community development department, as well as programs of the revised housing element. Then, the objective is to receive council and planning commission direction to guide the preparation of the formal municipal code amendments that will come to hearings in early 2024. The key points about tonight are that this is about the planning permit process, not other permitting processes, and that there are no final decisions on this. At this study session, we're asking for feedback on the topics and concepts, knowing that as we prepare the actual ordinances and such, and planning commission and council sees those, there are naturally going to be some more questions and changes at that point. So this is one step in a multi-step process. This presentation is going to focus on what staff considers the notable changes. While we have slides for everything in the staff report, I'm going to be going through most of those very quickly in order to have as, the presentation be, take up the least amount of time possible to allow for as much of the dialogue and questions. So with background, the proposed changes are based on a variety of things. Up on the screen, the changes seek to fulfill council strategic initiative 10.1, which I've already mentioned, and it's in the staff report as well, seeks to implement housing element programs 9A and 9D, which are also in attachment two to the staff report. There's also the reason behind the proposed changes is to find capacity for a number of major initiatives that were either required by law to do, or that the city council has established strategic initiatives to prioritize. The proposed changes also seek to respond to observations both by staff and planning commissioners about the existing processes. And then a major theme is, with the system we have, find ways to make progress. Make adjustments, big or small, to move in the right direction. Just real quickly, this is a repeat out of the staff report, these are the major initiatives that staff feels are on the horizon or that need to be done right now, and they're either required by state, as noted, or they're things that the council's interested in. Do want to give special attention to the transit corridor program, because that hasn't been mentioned, but it's been 10 years since the plan was adopted, and staff does think that we need to do an assessment of the, of whether what the plan allows will result in the desired outcomes that were hoped 10 years ago. Particularly, is it financially feasible for us to expect either the city or the private property owners to improve the property in a manner that's going to achieve the vision? Again, very important things on this list that we want to try to see, are there things that we can do to build up capacity at both the planning commission and staff to be able to tackle? When it comes to the observations of existing processes, the feedback from staff and the planning commission led me to anecdotally say, nine out of 10 of the things that go to planning commission seem to not be very controversial. That then leads to the question, is that the best use of the planning commission? Is that the best use of staff time? And is that the best process to offer the homeowners and small businesses, who the majority of the planning permits, they are the applicants for? I believe we have an opportunity to redesign the process to benefit the nine out of 10. And the one out of 10 case that is more significant, those would go through a lengthier process. So we'll get into that further. The proposed changes came about by examining the many application and action, action types and processes in the zoning ordinance. The full list is in attachment one, there's 45 of them. They're, I categorized them into these categories. Again, as I noted, we have slides for all these, but I don't plan to go through each one of them. If anybody has questions about anything, I'm able to come back to those slides and we can discuss. I will be focusing more on what we consider the notable changes, which are off to the right, multifamily ministerial review, the R1 and R2 planning processes, and the use permit processes. The first application type is legislative actions. These are, in many ways, the most important because these are where council sets the rules, that all the planning projects are then reviewed for compliance with. There are no changes being proposed to the process on any of these. Next, we go into housing-related applications, starting with multifamily ministerial review. I'm going to start with the revised housing element program 9A, that commits the city to create ministerial processes for certain types of multifamily projects. We touched on this a little bit on the October 2023 study session with the planning commission and council. And multifamily ministerial review is different from what the city has done in the past in that it generally does not have a hearing, and you're only allowed to apply objective standards. There are certain cases where the state law already allows applicants to do ministerial review, and the prime example is 732 to 740 El Camino Real, that used the state law to go through the ministerial process, and that project's under construction right now. Proposed changes would implement program 9A to establish a ministerial process for two types of multifamily projects, row four and five on the table. There would be a third option for those that don't qualify for either of those, they would still go through a public hearing process. I can come back to this, but as I touched on this in October, I want to save more of the presentation time for things that are new to this night. And one of those is the R1 and R2 planning processes. And so, going to spend more time on this one because, simplifying this process is going to impact many homeowners who propose improvements on their properties. So as we looked at our regulations, we categorized the wide range of home improvement projects that trigger planning permits. Those have been categorized into these four boxes, if you will, and there are two axes as well. The horizontal axis is the potential for neighborhood concerns, so the items on the left side have lower potential for concerns, the boxes on the right side have higher, higher potential for concerns. The vertical axis is compliance with the zoning regulations. The items on the, on the top are fully compliant, they meet every zoning regulation. Items on the bottom are ones where the homeowners are asking for some variation. In theory, the process should be simpler for the green, for the green box. It's fully compliant, and it has the lowest potential of neighbor concerns. The dark red should have the most extensive process, it's not compliant and has the highest potential for neighbor concerns. Unfortunately, our current process often gives the green box as many hearings as it does the red boxes. And so, as we looked at that, we thought, how can we propose changes that will be more reflective of kind of which box you fall into? And so, what is proposed is, on the screen, these are only application types right now that fully comply, so this, these are application types that represent the top, the boxes on top. Seven, eight, and nine are applications where they fully comply and arguably do not have much of a privacy impact on a neighbor, and the proposal is to remove the planning permit requirement altogether. Items 10, 11, and 12, those involve either a third story, a new home on an infalot that has homes close by on either side, or cases that have second-story windows and decks that look into yards. While these all comply, it is fair to say a neighbor might have some privacy concerns if this were being proposed. So the idea is to make these administrative actions that still have some form of noticing and appeal options, but not have to go to hearings. The next slide, these are for the boxes on the bottom, these were the ones that do not comply. So these are homeowners asking for more than the zoning allows. And so, this is where the proposal is to create major and minor thresholds for what would go to a public hearing and what would be administrative. The concept is that the, whatever is considered major, depending on the thresholds that we come up with, would actually go to the planning commission. Whatever is considered minor, based on the thresholds, would be an administrative action. So for floor area ratio, or FAR, the past practice with the planning commission has been, consideration of FAR is up to .62, that is above our normal maximum of a .55. But because .62 was used for many of the rebuilds in the Crestmore neighborhood, the planning commission has allowed other projects to go up to that, but they have been very strict about not allowing it to go above .62. So staff is, for the purpose of starting the conversation, is recommending the threshold be .62. If you don't go above .62, it'd be administrative. If you go over .62, you have to go to planning commission. There are thresholds for all of the others, also listed above. Again, staff tried to identify what seemed like it was going to be a more significant change to our regulations and what was more minor. Again, the minor, even though it's administrative, there will still be noticing, and you can appeal any administrative action up to planning commission. So that is the proposals for the R1 and R2. I have a follow-up slide later on that has all of the thresholds as well, so we can come back and talk more about them. Those changes fulfill program 9D of the revised housing element to simplify review processes for single-family homes and additions. This is basically, now, I'm continuing to go down that table in attachment one of all the application types. On this slide, I'm not going to comment on any, if you have any questions, I can absolutely come back to these. On development permits, this one, I will discuss because there is a major-minor threshold introduced here that we would appreciate feedback on. So for planned development permits, a major-minor threshold is proposed. For major, it would go to planning commission, that would be a new development plan, so that's basically a project starting from scratch. It currently goes to planning commission, it would stay there. New buildings of any size. And then additions of 10% or more, or 10,000 square feet. Also, any newer change in a major use, and I will get to what a major use is in a future slide, all of those would qualify as major, all of those would go to planning commission. Everything under that would be minor and would go through an administrative action that would still have notice and still be appealable to the planning commission. There's nothing magical about the 10% or the 10,000. We currently have a threshold for 10,000 square feet where an architectural review permit over 10,000 has to go to the ARC as well as the planning commission. Since we already had that threshold, it's been... Since we already had that threshold, it's been shown here. The 10% is being added because if you have a small enough building, let's say you have a commercial building on El Camino, not having the threshold just at 10,000 square feet of an addition could mean you're tripling the size of the building. We think there is a point where if you have a small enough building, if you make enough of an addition as a percentage of that building, you should be major and go to Planning Commission. For lack of a better number, we came up with 10%. We think that's a conservative number, so if you add 10% to whatever building size you have, you would be major and go to Planning Commission. Again, have this on a future slide that we can come back to. Now, use permits. This is the third of the three notable changes that staff identified. Going to talk more detail about this because the proposed changes here would simplify the process for homeowners as well as small businesses. So for background, each zoning district has a list of permitted uses, a list of conditional uses, sometimes prohibited uses. Oftentimes, if it's just not listed, it's considered a prohibited use. For this chart, the permitted uses are in the quadrant shown in green. They're allowed by right. That means theoretically, they could occupy every building, every tenant's space in that zoning district, the whole shopping center or the whole street. Then you have conditional uses on the right side, and then the blue-gray box are the prohibited uses, not allowed at all. The two axes in this illustration, the horizontal is higher certainty about the use. That's the city having certainty about whether the use should or should not be allowed. And then the vertical axis is whether you have a low potential for operational concerns or a high one. So for the left side, the city has high certainty. We either know we want to allow it as a permitted use, or we know we don't want to allow it as a prohibited use, just kind of no question. On the right side, it depends. It depends on the operation of the business, depends on the intensity of that business, the particular location of that business, depends if the city can come up with conditions that might address impacts that are created in the area. So that conditional use permit process is very important because it opens the opportunity to have those type of businesses, but it gives a level of review to make sure that they fit. Currently, whether you have a high potential for operational concerns or low, all the use permits go to the Planning Commission. And so, the same kind of concept, nine out of 10 concept. Most of these use permits are not getting a lot of public comment, not having a lot of controversy. So the question, is there an opportunity to make some of them as minor conditional use permits that can go through a more administrative process while keeping some of them at the Planning Commission? So what's proposed here for use permits is Row 24 of this table. For R1 and R2, we would take out the use permit requirement. That ties back into the prior conversation about some of the projects that fully complied. Then also, we're proposing that a city project not be required to get a conditional use permit. A city project already has to come to council to have the final design approved, has to come to council to get the funding. Do we need another round of review? For everything else, staff's proposing that, except for some finite uses that be considered major, everything else would be an administrative hearing, a minor use permit. When we looked through all of the conditional uses in all of the zoning districts, there are really only a few that jumped out. Adult businesses in some commercial zones, bars, nightclubs, and lounges in some commercial zones, we think that should stay major, and that should stay at the Planning Commission. Also, the recently adopted ordinance about commercial cannabis, that actually has the use permit start at Planning Commission and go to council. We're proposing that stay as is as well. If there are other types of uses that the Planning Commission or council believe should be major, we would love to hear that so we can build up the major category. But at this point, we think, as a starting point, this is good for the conversation. For number 25 and 26, they're not as significant. I can't explain them if any have questions, but I'd like to move on to make sure. I take as little time as necessary in this. Okay. This slide, this is taking minor permits that are on Attachment 1. We have a table for it. If Planning Commission or council wants to talk through any of these, these are pretty minor, so I'm not going to add anything. Same for modifications. These are changes to permits that have already been entitled. Then we have other miscellaneous application types and processes. Again, they're listed in Attachment 1. If you have questions, happy to answer them about these. There are actions and processes with the administration of the zoning ordinance, interpretations, extensions, revocation. Again, come back to these. This is the second part to that, which has also the appeals. And then, these are, these next two slides are the summary slides of the thresholds. So this first one are the thresholds for R1 and R2 with the categories of the application types and what the thresholds are. So if there are any dialogue about this or questions, I can come back to this slide at any time. This next slide, these are the thresholds for everything other than R1 and R2. The ones that I think are the most important to talk about are the thresholds for the planned development permits, that 10% and 10,000 square feet. And then for the use permits, what should be a major use, what should be a minor use? That brings us then to the Architectural Review Committee. And the ARC is a subcommittee of the Planning Commission. It is made up of three planning commissioners that vary from meeting to meeting, and the ARC has authority over the application types above, the primary one being the architectural review permits, and they do see a lot of the minor modifications of certain R1 regulations. The, with new state laws effectively limiting cities' ability to do residential design review, and the intent to try to shift to more of kind of expedited process for the nine out of 10 applications that really have no issues, it's recommended that the authority for the ARC either shift up to the Planning Commission for all of the categories that are major, or down to an administrative actions for the categories that are minor. In doing so, the ARC would no longer have items to review and would be recommended to be removed from the municipal code. So schedule and next steps. Here's the anticipated schedule for the planning process improvements. Based on direction here tonight, we would bring formal ordinance language to the Planning Commission in early 2024. Planning Commission would make a recommendation to council. The target for the council dates are in March of 2024. Doing so would allow us to adjust the master fee schedule as part of its regular update and update that for council adoption by April, because as we are changing some of these planning processes, the number of staff hours and the cost of hearings, some of these application fees are going to go down. And so, we want to be able to get that done by the fee schedule update. And if we are able to do that, then the target effective date of the process changes, as well as the updated fee schedule, would be January, July 1, the start of the new fiscal So key takeaways and questions. What I hope you take away from this is, again, this is just looking at the planning permitting process. The major aspects of it are that there are certain multifamily housing projects that would become ministerial. Those are based on the housing element. Major applications would go to PC. Minor applications would be administrative. I think the key is, where are the thresholds? We need to make sure we put the thresholds in the right spot so that what council and the Planning Commission view as a major project ends up going to Planning Commission, and what is minor can be on an administrative track. The other thing to note is that optimally, we would look at these thresholds as part of a living document. Whatever we adopt, projects are going to come through, and we're going to learn. We're going to find certain thresholds. We're too high, certain we're too low, and that's fine. The hope is that as we do learn that, in future years, we can come back and request council authorization to adjust the thresholds. Then, for those that are concerned, we are reducing the planning review of projects in the city. The only planning review that gets removed out of all this are those R1 and R2 projects that fully comply and city projects. Everything else that currently gets a planning review still will. We're just talking about it may have a different decision-maker. Public noticing for permits that currently have noticing are going to stay, the exception being if it, for the projects turning into a ministerial process, those would not have noticing. I do believe most homeowners and small business owners that come through and get planning permits would benefit from a faster process because most are in compliance or are doing a minor use permit, and neighbors haven't come to those meetings and raised issues, and those have been pretty routinely approved. Then the side note is, the time that staff, the capacity gained by staff for these shifting to administrative, and the capacity gained by the Planning Commission by having less of their agendas with these minor applications, open up capacity for all the other major initiatives. All the state-required, long-range planning work that will require the Planning Commission to really dig in. And then, while I don't want to overstate it, there will be a modest economic development improvement in that homeowners and business owners will be able to get from point A to point B in less time and at less cost. So with that, the requested feedback. When we put together this package, we really tried to balance a lot of different issues. Feedback is really appreciated on whether there's support on the, not just the individual changes, but on the principles behind the changes. Not only will that help with this amendment, it could help guide staff on other projects we're working on. I think the biggest question is going to be on the thresholds. Are they being proposed in the right spots? Which ones does Planning Commission and council want us to study further and adjust as it comes forward in ordinance form? And then the last, is there support to go that step of starting to prepare the actual ordinance language, bringing those forward to hearings, with the understanding that as you see the actual language in details, there are still going to be adjustments made at those hearings to what's being proposed? So with that, that concludes my presentation and available for any questions, and I'm available to go to any slide while we're going through the discussion.
Thank you very much. So at this time, I want to ask colleagues up here, council members, are there any questions on the presentation? Let's just deal with the presentation. I know there's for commentary and feedback, and we'll get to that in the second round. So is there any at this time? Councilmember Medina?
Yes, thank you. Very interesting presentation. I appreciate looking into these things that will make things more efficient. You mentioned appeals. So I didn't pick up when, what, these changes, how will they affect the appeal process? I'm imagining a building will get approved, a height, and then, next thing you know, the resident doesn't get informed about this project because it doesn't go to the Planning Commission, and then they're looking up at this building that's like, to them, it looks pretty high, and the windows are facing their backyards or bedrooms. So where would the appeal be? And then, I'll leave it at that for now.
Okay. So every, as I tried to emphasize, every project that currently gets noticing still will, except for those very rare cases where we're recommending that the permit just not be done. And those are the ones that are fully compliant and don't have a privacy impact. So let's take the example of someone built a second story and has some side-facing windows. Those would fall into the category that it does need a planning permit. We would do noticing. So the same notices will go out to the resident, but instead of it saying, there's this hearing, it's going to say, we got this application for this. If you have any concerns, please contact us. If that neighbor comes to us with a concern, we're going to then talk to the applicant, see if something can be worked out. In theory, if it can't get worked out, and both sides are just in absolute disagreement, what I would call the one out of 10, that might get appealed. But from what we're seeing, that doesn't happen very often. It does happen, but not very often. And the goal is, how can we make a process so the nine out of 10 times when everyone's okay, they can get through faster? And yeah, in that one case, we might approve it at the administrative level and get appealed, and it goes to Planning Commission, and Planning Commission might do something different. And I think that's okay, because we got those other nine applicants through. So the idea is, it's still noticed, we're going to, staff's going to think about some way of having a page on the website that documents our recent administrative actions if this goes through, so that people can know what actions are being taken, and if there's something someone has a concern with, even if they're not a neighbor. If they want to appeal, they'd be able to.
And just one follow-up question. If this has been considered, the usage of story polls?
So we have not talked about that yet. It's something we can look into. In prior, earlier in my career, I had the responsibility for doing single-family review for a city that had story polls. It was as useful as it was not useful, because they don't give you the best picture of what is going to be there. Now, they do give you a good sense of massing. But that can certainly be looked into, and we would just want to look at the cost to the applicant, the cost benefit of having it there, and that's certainly something that can be looked at.
Sorry. Vice Mayor?
So, thank you for the presentation. So when we're talking about the multifamily ministerial review, I'm pretty sure I know the answer, but I just want to be clear. So the proposed changes that would move some of these items from the ARC and the Planning Commission to admin and ministerial, these would be citywide? These aren't just projects that are within the transit corridor or that are near transit as defined by the various state laws? This is a multifamily project that is proposed anywhere within the city?
It would be citywide, but they would have to be on sites that allow multifamily housing.
Right. The zoning still counts.
Yeah. It's not like you have a single-family house and you propose an apartment building, and you're going to go through a ministerial process. But yes, if it's, for number four, those are the sites that we identified in our housing element that we're taking credit for adding up to our arena. And then, number five would be ones that are not on that list. And then number six would be if they're not on the list and they chose not to do the extra affordable, then they would go through the regular hearing process and go to the Planning Commission.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Next. I think you answered this right at the end in your final comments, so I just wanted to, but I'll ask it anyway, just in case, and of course, it just disappeared. All right. So it sounds like we already did, but have we done or will we do reviews of past projects to see how many projects are denied or changed in non-minor ways at the Planning Commission level? Because that'll help us inform when moving to an admin process makes sense. But it seems like that's what kind of put this whole thing together. I just wanted to confirm that.
I would say that the observations of staff and Planning Commission were a supporting element of proposing these things. The primary reason these changes are being proposed are because of the strategic initiative and the... proposed are because of of the strategic initiative and the the attempt to make the process work better, to have more capacity for the for the other types of things and such. But I do want to confirm, we did not do an exhaustive analysis. That's why we're only saying anecdotally, you know, the nine out of 10 concept. But it is a conversation I'd have had with with most of the planning commissioners individually and with staff about. Did they see it through the same lens and 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 planning commissions here that that they'll be able to either either confirm or deny that?
Okay. And then my next question is a comment. So I'll save it. And then my last question is. So getting down to the requested feedback part, when you're when you talk about, you know, preparing the formal ordinance language and bringing it back and allowing the planning commission and city council to adjust those. And you may not have thought thought through this through yet, and it's okay if the answer is we don't know yet. Is the would we have that discussion jointly like we're doing tonight? Or would it be a separate process, first to the planning commission and then to the city council?
So. Because of the timeframes involved, it's planned to be separate. If we were not trying to get this done and in place for July 1, we could do more joint meetings in this timeframe and such. So at this point, that's not being suggested. But it's something we we can look at.
Wouldn't it be faster to do it jointly? I'm sorry, I'm not following the logic there.
At this point, the the timeframe to get to the if I got, yeah, thank you, the timeframe to get to the effective date being on on July 1. Requires us pretty much to jump into public hearings in February.
Got it.
So there really wouldn't be. They would they would need to be public hearings and not study sessions because legislative approvals have to be the more formal hearings.
I got it. Thank you.
Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you. So I just wanted a clarification, and it sounded like anything that that becomes ministerial no longer has a noticing requirement tied to it. And, you know, looking at the at the the list, the slide that we we had back up, number 12 with item 456 on it. Multifamily homes, 20% lower income, basically wouldn't have any notice requirement, but it could be a significant project with with serious impact to the surrounding community. And because of this, nobody would really know about it unless they were really paying attention. And so I kind of disagree that that alone should be. A reason for not doing noticing and maybe I don't disagree that it perhaps should be ministerial, but I'm saying that there might be some ministerial projects that maybe should continue to have noticing because of their impact on the community. And maybe that should be the criteria for when we send out notices. Because, you know, getting back to Council Member Medina's thing, if we end up generating a lot of complaints or, you know, people wanting us to overturn decisions, it's only going to take more time than it would have normally. And I think that's what we're trying to avoid.
Yes, yeah. And and there are options that we can we can go down that path. This table is different from really everything else in the proposal, as this is the table implementing housing element programs, whereas almost every other table was the primary goal was to make things more efficient for the city, for our applicants and such, trying to find things that were minor and letting them go through a more expedited process. Four and five will will not be minor projects. Those are like 732 to 740 was not El Camino Real was not a minor project. So this is trying to comply with what we what we committed in the housing element. The city could take, we could do the noticing. We could still send a courtesy notice out saying, we want you to know there's this there's this project being proposed based on the housing element state law. It's going to go, it's not going to come to a hearing, but we want you to know about it. We can certainly do that. It's just I don't think we can charge the applicant to pay for that. So if that is something that is. Of interest, I think we could certainly do that. We would also update our website and so on and so forth. But I think we certainly could could do that. And there it's not that there's going to be on number four, there's 22 housing element sites. Over an eight year period. It's a finite number. We're not talking about 1,000 projects that we're going to have to do noticing for. So it is something we can do to let people know that is coming. I just think we need to be careful and make sure everyone understands we're telling some we're letting someone know something's coming that because of state laws, we we can't really say no to, but we still want to let them know.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation and to staff initiative for this approach. I think the R1 and R2 approach is good. It basically speeds up the process for the application. And since you mentioned the 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 fee, the master fee schedule, I'm not going to elaborate the question to that part, because if we eliminate the application, you know, we eliminate the fee and we're giving the staff to review this application or applications for what matter. Where does the screening part of the application begin? So when they apply for a building permit, it goes to our permit staff permitting staff, not goes to the planning review process. Then it I think the the time for the application permit fee basically has to be accounted for all the people that will be screening the the application. If it requires, if this is R1 and R2, that that does not require a permit and it doesn't go to the the planning planning commissioner, planning commissioner review and also the ARC review.
Yes. And so. Part of the reason why we are hoping to be able to get whatever package that can be agreed upon through the process and adopted by council in March is to update the fees accordingly, so that that they're aligned. And yeah, I do believe the the single family, the R1, R2, single family homes, those that comply with the regulations are going to see, well, either they don't need a planning permit, they go straight to building and there's this whole fee that they don't have to pay, or they're the the admin fee for what they do have to do is going to be substantially less. For the ones that are asking for variation, there's still a lot of analysis. So that fee might not drop quite as much. But yeah, the part of the benefit is not just going to be in time, it's going to be in in the cost. The other good thing about this change is currently. Homeowners that fully comply, they generally don't know they need a planning planning permit. So they file for the billing permit and they have all their, you know, construction drawings all done. And then they're told in their first round of comments, oh, you need a planning permit. And and in that process, you might have to change some things and 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 such. So I think in a lot of ways, this is going to help the the homeowners that are building within what the ordinances allow.
Thank you. Just see if there's any, we'll go right down the line.
I, in general, am thrilled with this. I think it's great. Almost almost without exception. I would say the the one thing I was trying to figure out was was thinking about, you know, the nine out of 10 with the the sort of residential second story additions. The only case I can even remember from my four years and some months so far on the planning commission that was controversial with that, the thing that triggered controversy was setbacks, that it was essentially that there was a second story addition, the height was under the required height limit, you know, like I was, I don't think it would have triggered the administrative notice on this model. And so I think, and like, I really think that it did get improved by, you know, the neighbor ended up still not being happy at the end, but it was a better project and was going to have a significantly lower impact on the neighbor. And so like, I really think it did benefit from review. And so I do think adding something in regard to setbacks as triggering the administrative noticing so that somebody can look at and go, I don't like this, I want to appeal at the planning commission, we probably should include something like that. Because if that if that 1261 Clermont, I think it only would have fallen under line seven, eight, and nine. I was trying to figure it out. I don't think it would have hit any of the other administrative noticing ones.
If I if I could get the slide up, please. Yes, thank you. So if if a project does ask to encroach, then you are then you are going to trigger noticing and such. Now, the case that you mentioned, I actually I don't know that they needed a setback exception. Yeah. So they actually complied pretty much.
My recollection, I'm sorry to get into bogging down on details. They had an existing building that was grandfathered in that was closer to the property line than it was like four feet instead of five feet or something like that. And they wanted to build straight up from that wall. And so the the massing that they were adding was encroaching, I want to say like one foot into the what was the official setback, but like it was grandfathered. And like.
So if that's if it that's true, if someone proposes an addition that encroaches into a setback.
And so that that would, in this case, trigger line 16?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Because because the idea is we want to be able to go back and part of this is even to explain it to regular people. Why wasn't I notified? Well, if something fully complies with no privacy, it doesn't go to hearings. If it fully complies, it has privacy, you do need a process and so on and so forth. We want to make it understandable and easily explainable.
Yeah, I 100% agree with the principles. I'm just I'm kind of thinking from the perspective of like, what are the projects like this? Like, this is the one of these R1 and R2 ones in four years that like, I think it deserved review. And so like, I want to make sure that whatever we're doing would have captured that example. And but it sounds like it probably actually would have like I had missed that honestly, that it would trigger 16. And so if it did, then I'm basically happy with this whole package.
Okay, we can go down the line. If you don't have any comments on there were any questions, I should say, at this time.
Okay, yeah, yeah, totally agree. I think one of the things that would complement what Rose is talking about is tightening up the design guide with some daylight plane provisions. The reason that particular project, it was a corner lot, and that kind of also contributed to the need for, you know, trying to get get around that. So I think we need to tighten up the language in the design guide about, you know, adjacent properties, regardless if they have two open size, need to comply with the daylight plane. Regarding the. Just the whole thing, again, I think this is this is really good. Has there been an analysis done, just say of the last year? I want to say we have on average two to three items per meeting on the agenda. Using the nine, 10 rule, that would leave three items on the agenda, basically for us to review. If nine out of 10 of them don't really need to come to us anymore. Would there be thoughts of making the the meeting like every other month? Because just the volume would be way reduced. And you also said the ARC would be going away. So just curious, has like, have you done an analysis, like how many projects in 2023 would have gone to us under the new provisions?
We are definitely looking that at that as new agendas are coming forth. We think there, again, because of the other initiatives that need to be done, we actually think we're going to have the same number of meetings. There might not be as many items, but the item that is on will probably be a more substantive item, a policy issue. But at this point, we haven't worked worked out all the details because we we want to see kind of, are we going on the right track to make this ordinance change in order to see how that then works?
Okay. And then one other thing, have you guys anticipated with the new FAR limit going from 0.55 to 0.62 that you're going to get more people kind of pushing the envelope beyond that? Are you going to be firm on that 0.62 limit? Because, you know, I guess it varies from project to project and lot size to lot size. Some people.
And slope and such.
Yeah, what not. And then the last question, sorry, two parter, the appeal process, does that take just one individual to appeal some neighbor? And it kicks us to having it on the planning commission? Or does it take like a certain number of just folks? Okay.
I mean, there will be an appeal fee. My recommendation is that the appeal fee for appealing an administrative thing, an item, not be as high as like appealing the planning commission up up to the council, because planning commission is a board of of seven and so but but there would be a fee. Someone will have to put some money down in order to come up up to the planning commission.
And then the applicant would have to pay for the actual costs of the review to the planning commission? Or are they?
The if the applicant, if the applicant applies for something that can be administrative, the applicant would only pay for that administrative action. And then the added cost that comes with the appeal, the appeal fee will pay for a portion. But admittedly, we don't charge full cost recovery on appeals. And again, I think the thought is. If this is done well, there won't be too many of them. And overall, it'll still be a net benefit.
Okay, great. Thank you. Great presentation and lots of good ideas.
Thank you.
Peter, your last comment there, if this is done well, it's something that's lingered with me as I read the packet. I'm generally supportive of the principles and streamlining the process. I'm wondering, and I couldn't find anything in the packet and I was listening for it. It just sounds really innovative. And I'm wondering if there's other examples of other municipalities and other planning commissions that have streamlined the process in a similar way. And do you know of those? Can you share those? And if they yield the results that you're hoping for and somewhat advertising here? I guess that would be my first question. And then secondly, I would like in a further conversation about being more efficient and streamlining and the nine out of 10, I need more quantifiable data. I need more anticipation of exactly what, how is this going to manifest for the planning commission, for the council? I think Commissioner Madden's question is great about, so what does this mean for agendas? Is it meeting more? Is it less? You partly answered that. But I, you know, it'll be financially more efficient. So what exactly does that mean? And what are some of those deliverables? I just I just need some hard data. I I share your optimism, but it would be great in a future conversation to know exactly what is it that the what are the byproducts that are going to be delivered in the process? Appreciate the presentation, Peter. Great job.
Thank you, Peter. Great presentation. I'm on board with what everyone else has said so far. I don't really have too much to add, other than I'm curious, in terms of staff time and effort for an individual product project, what does it take to get it to planning commission? I mean, there's there's staff time at meetings, you've got to write a staff report. What would you guess that for an individual project?
Yes. So we generally estimate that. Preparing an item for planning commission is about the about a third of the work. So the idea is, if there's certain things that currently are planning commission and it can be done as an administrative action, we could conceivably get some of these applications done with just two thirds of the time spent. All the same amount of time analyzing, making sure it complies, making sure the noticing is done, all that still happens. But as you said, instead of a staff report, slides, and the conditions of approval, the only document that the staff has to make are the conditions of approval. The only staff, the only thing that the that that the managers have to review, again, it's lesson. So kind of going back to the question, we can, we can give you projections and estimates, but until we actually try something and then and then have a comparison, we won't really be able to give you quantifiable data. Also, I don't know how well we've tracked how many hours are spent on some of our our other planning projects. Some of them are cost recovery and thus we know hour by hour. Most of these ones we're talking about, like the R1 applications, it's a base fee, not cost recovery. And so even then, we probably still have to give you some kind of estimate. But we'll try to pull together what we can as as we move forward.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you. As you were presenting, thank you, it was an excellent presentation. And. And I have a lot of support for the plan. I do have some questions. As you were presenting my almost 36 years as a commissioner, was coming through all these notes that I was taking, so I'm going to just briefly go through some of these and just ask some questions. What I find is that the commission, over the years, has been also a problem solver for applicants. And that in itself has streamlined some issues in the neighborhoods and the communities, and clarification in a lot of ways. And I think that comes because of our own personal experiences. This is a volunteer position. We all bring to the table our own experiences, whether it's, we've had attorneys in the past, engineers, roofing experiences. And that really brings a lot of value, and that brings a lot of questions and a lot of clarity. And I've gained a lot of knowledge through my colleague, Commissioner Kelly over here, just her design, architectural reviews. I'm completely in support of the process. I think streamlining and clarifying is extremely important. That is probably the biggest issue when I'm at meetings in different places, that the biggest complaint that I receive, it just takes too long. I don't think they want us in business. And I know that's not the case. So I'm delighted to think that this could be different. A quick couple of questions that I have, well, actually, there are a few of them here, is there's going to be a process now that the applicants can come before the planning commission to appeal it. And so, and then to the city council. So I'm not looking for an answer on the how, but basically, there's going to be a process. It'll be, my hope is that it doesn't get to that point, because it'll be a lot of clarity through the whole renovation of this. However, to track how many are actually going to the planning commission and why that's taking place. As I mentioned, some of the things that took, some of the issues that took place from some of the applicants, there were administrative decisions that were made. There was a culture and the experience within the community, within the body of the planning department. And there was just a culture. And I believe that a lot of it was overworked, understaffed, you know, just the resources weren't there. And everyone was doing the best they could possibly do. However, it did create a culture, and it was very punitive for applicants. And they came before the commission, they presented it, and it was oftentimes resolved before us. New businesses, there were opportunities to fine tune. Some businesses, applicants would have, I want to be open from 10 to 6:00, and then we'd say, why not 7:00 to 8:00? And it just changes everything, having to come back again. So there was, my experience as a business owner in San Bruno for 45 years, I could bring that up, each commissioner brought that. And that's going to be a difference, because the staff will be employees, they're not going to bring that to the table. And so finding a way to think about that, right? Before pandemic, lots of site visits that we did, I know that the staff does site visits, by talking to neighbors, resolving some of the issues that happened at that point, before it even comes to staff. Just look here. Will applicants, these are not in any order, it was just basically my thoughts as you were presenting, but will applicants be informed that there is an appeal process to the planning commission and to the city council? I'm sure there will be. Architectural review, lots of design opportunities there. When we, my most recent memory is when the gigantic one that, on Al Camino there, we, Kelly, Commissioner Kelly, I mean, her thoughts that came into this were incredible. And it made major changes and added so much value. And so they went back and they were pleased with all of those recommendations. So how will that take place? You know, it's just, it's more eyes, right? Let's see. The idea of getting to point A to point B with less expense and having more time is brilliant. I think it's great. I think one of my colleagues already brought up the light studies, setbacks, encroachments, I won't comment on that. Neighbor communication, that comes up for me in just being in the community. And one of the things that was, I really felt there was a valuable piece, when there were businesses like Board and Care Homes, childcare, I brought knowledge to that. And there's a process in Department of Social Service, and it really is a back and forth piece. The applicant can really get permission to say, the fire department complied, they say, oh, this compliance is good. But when I walk in there, there are things that I see and I come back to the staff and bring input. And it's critical. And there were a couple that were not even allowed to open because of that knowledge. So it's not that I'm so brilliant, it's the fact that we have an expertise at this table. You know, we're basically an independent body as commissioners, you know, we're volunteers, and we, the relationship with our community, I think they see us as something different. And there's value in that. And so how can we not lose that opportunity? When I come, when I'm at a planning commission meeting, I use that value to problem solve, to bring things that, there is completion and more forward thinking. So there is opportunity to have a win-win situation. Is there going to be any impact to the ADUs and the notification? I was, I had the experience of an ADU being built right next door to my building on Santa Inez, and I was never notified, and it was directly, directly next door, huge, where I wasn't notified. And I, my business, I mean, I had 100 parents every single day coming and going, twice a day in the cars. And, you know, it's just like, those are the types of things that are critically important to think about. How will that could be resolved? How will you get information about those things? And I think the big picture is establishing a process for feedback. And maybe in the beginning of this process, because I do support it, is to look at, maybe for the first year, there is, there are sessions to say, let's meet half hour before a planning meeting. Or if we're not going to be meeting as frequently, then let's look at this for the first year and have meetings so that we can provide you the feedback, if that's the case, or written comment. I don't believe that written comment is as valuable. I think that meeting, having meetings to brainstorm adds a lot of value. And that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I have like one minute to respond?
I have two.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate that. Fundamentally, fundamentally, what I would say is, this isn't just about changing a process. As you said, staff will have to do things a little differently.
Yes.
Staff will have to be more problem solvers, introduce ideas, and not be a, well, I'm just checking for compliance and I'm taking you to the next step. So absolutely agree. It is not just change some things on the table, change some things in the ordinance, and everything works. So we are going to be working hard on that.
I believe that. I think the challenge will be is that we all have a difference of experience, right? That it prompts the thoughts and the questions at the time. And so I think that's the piece that I'm thinking of. How can we not lose as much of it? But thank you very much for the opportunity to comment on it. I really appreciate your presentation. Hi. I'm sorry, can I just say one more thing? In the past, excuse me so much, in the past, we used to meet diligently twice a month. And then we went to once a month. And it has declined so much over the years. It's changed drastically over my 36, almost 36 years. And so going potentially every other month, the thought that we can be more productive and more efficient in time sounds absolutely marvelous.
I'm generally very supportive of all of these ideas. I think that the nine out of 10 has been really very true, and I think it makes a great deal of sense to streamline. However, Commissioner Johnson brought up something I'm just going to kind of jump on as well, is I have seen ARC review being super valuable, because it seems to be a great opportunity for a more kind of roll-up-your-sleeves conversation between the applicant, staff, commissioners, and generally neighbors and other stakeholders. And I think they're great meetings, because everybody's skill, everybody's background and expertise comes to the table. And I think that when it gets through that meeting, sometimes it's just a super simple decision when it comes to the planning commission. But I think had it not gone through the process of ARC review, it would have been a poorer project, and probably more complex when it came to the decision-making process. And I just, I feel like the hands on it are expensive, time-consuming, not particularly practical. But I think that there is, like Commissioner Johnson was saying, there is a value that all the parties that get together bring. And I think that that now, that burden will be placed on staff or maybe a consultant, I don't know how you guys will deal with that. But we've seen, I can't help myself, because I'm a designer, but we have seen some really wacky stuff come through. And although it technically is compliant, I would not want to live across the street from that. And so I think that it is, the expertise that comes here, it really yields a better product for a lot of the projects. And it, as a whole, it improves the, I don't know, the quality of our neighborhoods. And so I just hope some of that will get lost. And I don't know if, I think it's also a big burden that may end up on staff.
So Director, you were also asking for three items for feedback. Did you feel you had enough? Would you like me to go back around, get any last questions, and maybe that feedback questions that you were asking?
Mr. Mayor, have the slide up.
Thank you.
If there's.
Slide 33, thank you, sir.
If there is a sentiment that we're on the right track, that would really be all we have to hear. But if there's more details, happy to.
Let me ask on question one, and then add other comments. Is there support for the principles presented in overall package and concepts, or anybody that has concerns, reservation, wants to make additional comments to the contrary? Vice Mayor?
No, I was giving you a thumbs up.
Oh, thank you. Councilmember Alvarez, do you have, are you in supporters or something different on this?
Yes, I am in support, but a little bit of feedback.
Sure, please.
So in the event that we do receive some appeal, and I understand what Commissioner Kelly and Mary relayed on the table, that they do have certain expertise that the council member doesn't. So when it comes to the appeal process, and we haven't been involved until, and ultimately, what I have seen was the ultimate appeal was to come to the council and get our approval. But then before that, there was a process that they go to the planning commissioner for a first appeal. So is that something that we're also eliminating when, in the event that there's an appeal?
The proposed appeal process would be, if it's administrative action, the appeal goes to planning commission. If someone appeals the planning commission's action on the appeal, then it would go to council. So if it's a planning commission action, the appeal would go up to council. So for the most part, we're leaving the appeal process as it currently is.
Okay, thank you. Makes sense.
Okay, there were some comments.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. So I am absolutely in support of these principles. I think this is, I think this is really great. One thing that I didn't hear, but is something that we're all aware of because of our closeness to the whole process, is there's a bunch of new state laws, as we know, and some, at least one of them, I don't remember the number, limits the number of meetings you can have for particular projects. And this is absolutely going to help us address that issue as well, where, you know, especially if some of these meetings are really ultimately unnecessary, and saving those limited numbers of opportunities for some of these larger projects, for, I think is really going to help. So I am absolutely in support.
Okay, then there was a second one, which is, are there certain thresholds that should be studied further and/or adjusted that we've seen here tonight? Anybody has a comment in addition, or yes?
Yeah.
And then, Tom, that narrows.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I don't know if it's an actual threshold, but will your staff have a process, an internal process, say hypothetical, a homeowner comes around and they've complied with everything, but they want diamond-shaped windows? And you guys tell them, oh, no, you need to get something more fitting in the neighborhood. And they just resist or flat-out refuse. Do you guys, will you have a process where you can say, okay, I'm not, I'm going to kick this to the planning commission? Is that something you can do?
That is, that is something that I would like to have in the ordinance as an option, that really for any of the administrative actions, if there's some level of controversy, I don't know if that one.
Yeah, I'm just sort of obvious one.
Yeah. That administratively, we can move that up to the planning commission.
Okay. And then, just building on what Commissioner Drazo said, getting some numbers. So is it, are we going to see in future meetings, like maybe an analysis of how many agenda items would have been not presented over like, you know, the last five, seven, eight years, whatever it is? And then factoring in the pandemic years and whatnot, is that something you can provide us? Just so we get a sense of, you know, what.
We can, it just, it would be, the further we go back, the more difficult it will be to put that together. But we can certainly do, I think, one to two years pretty easily. And then we can have regular updates where we inform you on ones that, actions that were made administratively and such.
Okay, great, thank you. That's all I have.
Is there, anyone else with a question? Please, go ahead.
Yeah, you know, so with these thresholds, and as you're detailing them out, I'd ask you to think of another framework, and that's risks first benefits. You know, who does it impact? So the risks, it's the who and the how, and then the benefits, who and how. As, to get into detail, just my personal feelings on this, ministerial approvals for multifamily, right? I think that needs to have some detailed thresholds out. I personally think things like one to four units, or even like seven units, like this missing middle, things that only impact adjacent properties, the risks are smaller. Larger properties may have impacts that can impact the public, right? People that don't just live in the adjacent areas. You'll probably tell me that they'll be approved anyways, like the one that recently came to us. And there's nothing that we can do, and, you know, we're just going to be, you know, on planning commission or in the city council, forced to approve it despite. My response to that, though, is even, even though we don't really have much options to approve it, the fact that they have to go through the process will force them to design a better product. And so we should still have that process in place, make them go through the road. And it'll be better for the community overall. And frankly, projects that are of that scale, and we're talking about $100 million projects over several years, it's a drop in the bucket in terms of cost or time. So we should make them go through it and have a better outcome for everybody.
Anyone else on the commission at this time? Okay, anybody else on the council? That was a question, too. Last one is, is there support to prepare the formal ordinance language with the understanding that the planning commission and city council may adjust certain aspects when presented with the complete ordinance language? Everybody good with that? I think, I see nods and thumbs up, so that's a positive. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak on this topic this evening?
I have no speaker cards.
Okay, with that, I want to thank everybody. Thank you to the planning commission for, A, being here. Thank you to the planning commission for, A, being here for a second meeting. I know our topic started maybe a little later than anticipated, so I appreciate your patience. With that, we're going to take a five-minute recess, and then come back so we can continue the regular city council meeting. Okay, now we are going to continue back to the agenda after our study session. We're now on item seven, which is consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented by an earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. There will be one single public comment, period, for all items in this section unless a council member requests to pull an item for a separate vote. Any council member for a separate vote on any of the items? That's 7A through 7O. Seeing none, any items that want comment or further discussion? Councilmember Medina?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. G, as in George.
Thank you.
And J, as in John.
Thank you. Anything else from anyone? Okay, why don't we start with the first one, which is G, consider adoption of a resolution accepting the street light pole replacement project as complete. Councilmember Medina?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to just point out a couple of things. I briefly spoke with our public works director earlier, just briefly to say, so there's 2,100 streetlights in San Bruno. 680 of them were recommended for replacement. This one project costs $476,000 for 31 poles, which is approximately 4.5% of the number of poles that we need to replace. And the cost of that was roughly $15,000 per pole. So the reality of what our infrastructure costs are, just in streetlights alone, to replace the 649 more streetlights, poles, is almost $10 million. And it's almost staggering when I did that math, and I did it twice. It's going to take 20, 20 years at 4.5% a year to replace our streetlights. And those are the, of the 680 that were analyzed that they need to be replaced, eventually all of them need to be replaced. Nothing lasts forever, but it's just kind of an amazing stat. And the reality that San Bruno has is an old city, that, you know, we have these costs. And until you start really looking at them, I mean, it's just, it's almost overwhelming. So when we go forward in our budget process, I mean, to see, like, how are we going to continue to do this with the limited funds that we have now? So, Mr. Mayor, that was primarily the reason why I pulled this, just to kind of give our community just an update, like, this is a reality we need to come up with and deal with.
Okay, thank you. And it's not pulled, it's just for, you know, comment, yeah?
Yes, sir.
Anything else from colleagues? Let's go to item J. Consider adoption of a resolution accepting the spyglass storm drain improvement project as complete, authorizing the filing of notice of completion with the San Mateo County Recorder's Office. Councilmember Medina?
Yes, and I wanted to also highlight the work that was done. This is a project that we've been hearing about for a number of years, that we finally got, that 75% of the total project cost of the $1.5 million to do this project was funded by Cal OES. And so just wanted to acknowledge that work. And thank staff for following through. And that's one location that we, one of the, one of the few locations that we won't have to worry about hopefully flooding in that, in that historical region. So that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Any comments from the public?
I have no speaker cards.
Bring it back to council for action on consent, items 7A through 7O.
We'll make a motion to approve the items on consent.
Motion, Hamilton, second with Salazar, to approve consent. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Pass unanimously. Item eight, conduct of business.
Item 8A, consider introducing read-by-title-only and waiving further reading of an ordinance entitled in ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Bruno, amending Title Eight, Streets, Sidewalks, and Rite of Ways, and amending Chapter 13, Inspection, Repair, and Replacement of Private Sewer Laterals of Title 10, Municipal Services as Part of a Comprehensive Update, and finding such actions exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you very much, and we're going to hear from the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Medina, city council members, Tricia Ortiz, your city attorney. Tonight, we are going to, I'm going to present to you item 8A, which is the San Bruno Municipal Code update for Title Eight, which deals with streets, sidewalks, and rites of way. The agenda for this evening, I'm going to give a brief background. I'm going to go over the amendments to Title Eight, provide you tonight's recommended action, and then take questions about the proposed changes. So I'll begin with the background. On October 9th, 2018, the city council requested a comprehensive update to the municipal code. The city's municipal code is comprised of 11 titles plus the zoning code. And the primary focus of this update was to try to ensure internal consistency, and then also to provide consistency with current law. Many of the ordinances adopted that were codified in the municipal code had been adopted decades ago, and this was just a process to make sure everything was up to date and consistent. This process has been taking place over the last few years. You've already completed the review of titles one through seven, and then also Title 10. So tonight, we're here to talk about Title Eight. Next up will be Title Nine, and that has to do with parks and recreation. Title 11 was already updated in 2022 as part of the triennial California Uniform Code adoption cycle. Title 12 is a little bit different than the other titles. It requires a different process. Many of the changes tend to involve more policy. To the extent there's any changes, we'll coordinate with the Director of Community Development and see what changes might be helpful in the initiative that's being undertaken to update Title 12 in connection with the housing element. And then, so then the final step in this process will be to identify any outstanding miscellaneous items, perhaps bring back to you a miscellaneous items cleanup, and include some of those cleanups in Title 12 where appropriate. So now we'll turn to Title Eight. So there are 11 chapters in Title Eight. I'm going to walk through each of them and briefly describe the changes. The first chapter of Title Eight has to do with definitions. And the changes in the definition section, update definitions to include the name of directors that are in charge of implementing, or define terms for the directors that are in charge of implementing various chapters. They also clarify that any reference to a director would include its designee. And finally, it provides a very broad definition of encroachment to cover any obstruction in the rite of way, because the existing definition was a little bit narrow. Chapter 8.08 talks about prohibited obstructions on public streets. The proposed amendments in this chapter allow the, removes a provision that allowed the Director of Public Works to permit an obstruction on the sidewalk, because this largely is covered already by the encroachment process. The amendment also implements a recommendation by the police chief to remove a section on prohibiting games in streets. Because this is a very limited and unnecessary section, these type of prohibited acts are already covered by other areas of the code, as well as the California law. And then finally, we have chapter 8.12 that prescribes maintenance obligations for sidewalks adjacent to private property. This chapter places the duty to maintain sidewalks on the adjacent property owner, and then provides a process by which the city may request that the maintenance is done. And if it's not done, do the work itself, and then charge the property owner for the cost of the work. This chapter very, very closely mirrors the Enabling Act in the California Streets and Highways Code, which outlines this process for the city. The amendment removes a notice that was required to be provided by the finance director, because it duplicated a notice that was already provided by the Director of Public Works. The duplicated notice would probably, is not required by the statute, the Enabling Act, that this follows. And then also, I think it would cause confusion to a property owner to get two separate notices, one from the Director of Public Works and the other one from the Director of Finance. So now I'm moving on to chapter 8.16, which outlines the conditions and the process to issue an encroachment permit by the Director of Public Works. The amendments in this section add moratoria on street cuts. It is a five-year prohibition against cuts in the street after a resurfacing project, and then two years after a significant street maintenance project. And then it also outlines criteria under which the city engineer could make exceptions to the prohibition. The amendment also adds a provision that allows the Director of Public Works to accept a performance bond on an annual basis, rather than on a project-by-project basis to cover encroachment work, expected to occur during the next 12-month period. That's all the changes for the encroachment permit chapter. In the chapter regarding overhead poles and wires, there were no amendments. So that brings us now to chapter 8.24. The city's municipal code, Title Eight, has two different chapters that govern trees. The first governs the city's street trees, and the second governs mature trees, or what's called heritage trees on private property. So starting with eight, section 8.24, which concerns street trees and other plantings, this chapter is essentially what requires a permit to plant a tree on city property and to prune or remove. essentially what requires a permit to plant a tree on city property and to prune or remove such trees. Under the current law, the Director of Public Works is responsible, responsible for administering this chapter, as well as the maintenance and planting programs. And the amendment shifts this, these responsibilities to the Director of Public, of Community Services, which reflects the current practice. The amendments also allow discretion in the size of replacement trees, and then consolidates three different sections regarding maintenance of other plantings, and removes several duplicative provisions just to improve organization in this section. So continuing with the street tree chapter, the amendments also clarify that there is no appeal process for a city's decision to remove its own trees. As a general matter, you have an appeal process where you have, where you want to ensure some sort of due process for actions that deprive private life, liberty, or property interests. But there are no such private interests in connection with the city removing its own tree. The amendment also moves a section about sewer laterals to chapter 10.13, which is the municipal code chapter regarding sewer laddles, sewer laterals. This section just merely clarifies that a sewer lateral, sewer lateral is the responsibility of the private property owner. The section says nothing about trees. It was probably put there because of tree roots, but it doesn't specify that. So just to improve organization, it's been moved to the, the chapter on sewer laterals. Also make it easier for folks to find. So now I'm moving to chapter 8.25, which is regarding heritage trees, the mature trees on private property. Chapter 8.25 requires a permit for pruning and removal of mature trees. The amendments shift the responsibility for heritage trees from the Director of Public Works to the Director of Community Services, similarly to follow what the current practice is. The amendments also authorize a waiver of conditions when the permit is being issued, so that when the permit is being issued for a eucalyptus tree, with the hope to encourage the removal or not create obstacles to removal of eucalyptus trees that are deemed unsafe. And then the amendments reduce the size of replacement trees to encourage healthy reforestation. Finally, the, the amendments clarify that an appeal to a removal permit denial is, the rights for that appeal is for the person, the applicant that made the, that made the application. And they're the person who can then request that the denials is heard by the city council. Okay, so now we are at chapter 8.28, which is undergrounding facilities, and there are no amendments in that section. And then finally, we're looking at chapter 8.32, which is regarding the regulation of news racks in the right-of-way. As you all know, because we looked at this recently, news racks on public sidewalks are a means of distributing speech and are protected by the First Amendment, so any amendments to this section, keep that in mind. The proposed amendments are intended to reflect current practices, including the standards for placing news racks on sidewalks. The amendments also shift the responsibility for issuing permits for, for news racks to the Director of Public Works. Then finally, the last two chapters are 8.36 and 8.40. Both of these were very recently added to the municipal code, the first in 2019, and then the last one just earlier this year. And there are no amendments to these sections. So with that, the, the recommended action to you, for you tonight, is to introduce read-by-title-only and waive further reading of the ordinance that the city clerk read earlier. And with that, I will take any questions about the proposed changes to Title 8.
Thank you very much for the report. Are there any questions on the presentation from colleagues at this time? Councilmember Medina?
Oh, not yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a comment.
Is there no worries. Any members of the public?
I have no speaker cards.
We'll bring it back to colleagues for comments and our action. Councilmember Medina?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the report. It's nice to see that we're close to the finish line. Close to five years to get this updated, but nonetheless, here we are. For section 8.24090, the tree replacement, I'm a little concerned about this, because it's, it's clear in some neighborhoods that the city has not been replacing city street trees. And so changing that the city will to the city may, I'm just not, I'm not really satisfied with that. I, my concern is, if we haven't been replacing trees, and now we're going to say we may replace them, it's just like, it's not going to happen. So I would like to see, of the records that we have, how many tree, street trees have not been replaced, so that we can kind of gauge, like, and I, and I have a pretty good idea that a lot of them haven't been replaced. You can, you can walk on, in my district, and you could look down the street, and like, you can see where the tree used to be, and it, it's no longer there. So it has died or has been removed, and it's been like that for the, you know, I've, I've lived here for 20, going on 22 years, and that tree's not coming back. So if we can, if we can look at the amount of trees that have been removed, and I think during our budget session, I brought up, like, there is money in the street tree fund that we haven't touched into, and I, I guess we could go back and look at that during budget. But I'm just not comfortable with going may, going to may. It's just saying that we may replace it. I mean, we should be replacing the trees because they, they not only are beautiful, and they make, make your street look more appealing, because if you're going to go ahead and require it for climate change and, and having trees is important. So I'm having a little bit of trouble.
Comprehensive municipal code update. The purpose of a municipal code is typically to govern conduct, right? And so typically, you're establishing rules for people to follow. And then when you have things such as the replacement of trees, that's typically something that falls more into city policy. There's all sorts of things that govern whether or not that will occur, funding, things like that. The word will is not a real, is not a term that you usually see in a municipal code. It's usually you shall do something or you may do something. So may was just a term that was intended to kind of reflect what I think is typically the policy for replacement of street trees, which is, you know, the city will replace them when it has the funds. It's more of a policy decision. But, you know, this is, that's just kind of the thinking that went into it.
So I definitely do appreciate the responses. It's, it's the reality that some streets don't have as many trees as they should. And, and it's like, I'll, I think we can, we can address this and try to address this during budget. And I get it that, you know, may, but it's just pointing out that we haven't. And, you know, it probably should, should have said shall, right? Because that would be stronger. And, and so I made my point. I, I will bring this up during budget. So, thank you.
Any other questions on the presentation? And if not, oh, I'm sorry, we're already back here for final comments and our action.
Through the mayor, I'll make a motion to approve item 8A as read by the clerk.
I'll second. Motion, Hamilton, seconded by Salazar to go ahead and approve item 8A as read by the city clerk. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, can I just do a voice? For, yes. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's passed unanimously. We'll move on to item B, please.
Item B, confirm appointment of two city council members to serve as a committee to further explore the results of the 2023 Community Priority Survey and potential future revenue ballot measures.
Thank you. Jennifer Dianos, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Jennifer Dianos. I'm the Assistant to the City Manager, and I'm here tonight to present to you just a very quick overview for the appointment to a committee for the 2023 community survey results and future revenue measures. I'm going to provide you a short overview, and then a staff recommendation. And following that, we'll turn it over to the mayor to make the appointment. A brief background, in March 2023, the city council reviewed the strategic initiatives at the annual retreat that was held at that time. Part of the strategic initiatives included a community perception survey and potential revenue ballot measures. In September, the city hired a consultant, Godby and Associates, to conduct independent survey that was completed during the month of September, and followed by the analysis of the data that was collected. That, the results were presented to you at your last regular meeting, November 14th, by Brian Godby from Godby and Associates. The next steps in the process include the review and analysis of the results to explore what potential revenue measures may be available or considered for November 2024 election. This will require some staff research and analysis. And there are special considerations given time-sensitive actions that will be required if a ballot measure is considered and pursued, specifically a resolution calling for measures, which would be due to the county, San Mateo County Elections Office in early August of 2024, for the November 2024 ballot. Staff recommendation at this time would be for city council to appoint two city council members to serve as a committee. The committee would be tasked with the reviewing of the results of the survey and exploring potential ballot measures. Per the San Bruno Municipal Code, the mayor does make these appointments. And with that short presentation, I'll turn it over to the mayor for appointment.
Thank you. Any questions on the presentation at this point? Then I am asking for Vice Mayor Tom Hamilton, and I'm asking for Councilmember Salazar to please serve on the ad hoc committee. Is that okay? I have two yeses, no objections, so we will consider that done. And thank you very much for that quick report.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to item C.
Appointment of Vice Mayor to Serve a One-Year Term.
Thank you. With that, as you know, has, as it is for the city of San Bruno, we have the process to where this is straightforward, and under San Bruno Code 2.04.110, Michael Salazar is in line to be the next Vice Mayor based on our municipal code. And Mr. Salazar, are you willing to accept that?
Sure.
Then you will become the next Vice Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. And with that, we will move on to item D.
Item D, receive report and confirm appointment of city council members to serve as representatives and alternates to San Mateo County agencies and other regional bodies.
Thank you. With that, we usually have done this later in January, but thanks to the city clerk, we've gotten this done now. And so, reached out to colleagues, everybody was fine with the current assignments. So the sheet that has been disseminated in the packet is the same as you've seen, just if there was an addition to non-appointed city of San Bruno positions, they're listed at the bottom. But with that, everything remains the same as was, whether it's the primary or the alternates, if they're permitted. So I, I'm going to assume we're all good with that. And so, let's keep moving. Item nine, council committee report outs. Any, any persons at this time? Please. Mr. Hamilton, Mr. Vice Mayor, or you know what I mean?
I am no longer Vice Mayor.
Just like that.
Just like that. So I, on November 16th, we, the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency had our regular meeting. We started the meeting with a reception celebrating the 20-year anniversary of Bouska. It was a reception that included many former members, including San Bruno's own Irene O'Connell, who was a founding member of that, that organization. In our regular meeting, we learned the SFPUC will be shutting down outflows from Hetch Hetchy from December through March for scheduled work on the mountain tunnel and other infrastructure. It'll be, it'll be interesting, because most of the system is full of water, and so they have to get Hetch Hetchy empty enough to be able to take any water that we get through, through storms from December through March, because no water will be going out. So that'll be, that was, that's, that's an interesting dance that they'll be doing with our, with our water system. The SFPUC also announced it is going to be partnering with Bouska to explore creating a grant program to help local agencies like ours with projects that would reduce demand on the regional water system. So just, just barely getting underway with that, but should be of interest to us here in San Bruno. That's it.
Thank you. Any other committee report outs? If not, we'll move to item 10.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yes.
I think you need to call for public comment on the last two items, just to see if anybody in the public wants to comment.
Well, let's see. On the last two items, is, would you like to comment on anything? Okay. So noted. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so we'll, and thank you for being here to, to the end of the meeting. Item number 10, comments from council members. Any comments? Who's hitting the?
No, no pankey.
Sorry, I just had to confirm the date. So our second harvest food distribution will be on Wednesday, December 27th, at 2:00 PM at Bel Air School. As always, we can use volunteers to, to help us. And, and if you're food insecure, you do not need to have previously signed up. You can be signed up on the spot. Thank you.
Anything? For me, just, I'll try to shorten this. I want to say that on December 6th, spoke at the San Bruno Community Foundation, and the Community Services Director, as well as City Manager, were there. And of course, persons were awarded grants that have applied in the city of San Bruno. Not everybody received them, but they go to folks that help San Bruno residents, in addition to the generosity continued from YouTube. Also, being, hearing some reports about Sacramento's budget, where once it flourished, as everything together, and the Finance Director can tell me after the meeting whether I'm wrong, is about a $68 billion. That's everything consumed. As far as looking for the 2425 budget, it could be a $14 billion deficit, which will be, an update will be on January 10th, but always that is of a concern. On December 6th, had a meeting with the President of the San Bruno Park School District and the Superintendent, along with the City Manager and myself, on exploring the idea of a joint meeting next year. We agreed to have an update from the Superintendent and City Manager, and there would be an item or two to discuss, which was in scope of, for, that would both, that both affect us and our, and the communities we serve. And that will be with the new Board President, that we will start to look to that. And then on Caltrain, the no dumping signs are up. There are a few still left on San, San Antonio Avenue. The LED lights are now working. I think three of the four, the fourth should be done soon. Also, I want to thank the City Manager for meeting with the Executive Director from Caltrain. Both of them had a meet and greet, as well as to discuss the fountain, which I remind my colleagues, the Measure K funds do expire next year, $250,000. And that, but they had a good rapport to go there and look, look at everything that, that exists. So I want to thank the Executive Director, who I had a long conversation, I had a nice conversation with at the end of the month about certain items, and I appreciate those being done. And I will keep it to that. Oh, and just as an example, Eddie Young gave his best wishes to us. He is the CEO of the San Francisco Credit Union, and who I went, we met with for a while, just to see how things are going, and get his perspective on the future. Not that he has a crystal ball, and not that Nick doesn't know better, but to what he's seen in the market. So with that, I want to thank everybody for their patience. I want to thank everybody for being here. I want to thank the city staff and your departments and divisions for all that they have done this year. We will not be meeting until next year, so I want to very truly, from my heart, thank everyone, for it is here that makes it work. And without this, this wouldn't, wouldn't matter in some ways, because it's that that you do, and you deliver, and you... matter in some ways because it's that that you do, and you deliver, and you serve this community. So I wish all of you a very happy, safe, blessed holiday season, and to seeing all of us together again in the new year. And this meeting of the city council will be adjourned to the next regular city council meeting of January the 9th, 2024, at 7:00. Meeting adjourned.[1742.65]